Yeah.
We're starting with meeting. I'll call the order of the county council meeting for May thirteenth at six P M.
I'll call the order of the county council meeting for May thirteenth at six P M.
I guess we'll put it out with the the people here from Onvo and Marasco and Arctura, like the Philly and on the county renovations. And I don't know who wants to.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce the project. So Justin Nickel with Onvo, you're the B O T developer. I guess service provider on the project turnout. With me, Rachel, Michael and Alex and Marasco and Arctura, the team here represents the team compiled and put together by Commissioner, Commissioner Tim and Brendan here. So I'd like to introduce the project, talk about our central plans to date and provide maybe a range of costs that would be happening at the county annex. So with you, you should have a packet in front of you prepared by Arctura. Thank you guys. And I'll start by maybe open up the floor to Michael, like talking about the master plan and the need for this project.
Thanks, Dan. As you know, you all hired us to do master plan. Could I interrupt? The council did not hire.
Okay.
And I don't know if you're familiar, but or no, but on May second, there was a motion made that we were not going to fund the one million dollar project. And we voted that all bills that were done up through May second needed to be turned in by June first, and we wouldn't accept any bills after May second. The million dollar contract that's signed with Onvo.
Yeah.
Same thing, yeah.
Well, I'm just trying to, there was a motion, I think Kelly made the motion and for these few seconds that we voted seven oh that we were not going to fund that contract.
Yes, for Onvo?
For Onvo.
That you mentioned is.
We mentioned money for renovation that was supposed to do all renovation.
And that's why.
That's just for that design plan.
Well, the master plan included the annex and the courts. And that's what Michael and his team have done. And so when we signed the contract with Onvo to move forward, the process at the time, it was agreed by all to proceed because we had a million dollar in our ARCA fund plan. And the council budgeted that money last fall for this.
All those bills are to be paid with council through all commissioners.
I don't, I don't agree with you. Other counties, when the ARCA plan is approved, the committee, which included you, Holly, the auditor, and myself as president of commissioners. And when we when we presented that to council commissioners, it was approved by commissioners. Now, that was the exact date, but we did approve to use as our funds for
Those are funds for to be the full renovation of Maple Park. Andrews texted me with eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars full renovation. Now we're. We used the one that negotiated with commissioners and council to buy Maple Park. He broke down all the costs, nine one one. So I assume.
That's like, you know, but at the time, I don't think anybody knew some of the additional costs that were going to be hurt because of and I think Michael could explain it better than I can, with it being a multi level. You have to have an elevator in there. You have to have sort of kind of fire.
That building, it's a two point million dollar building.
I just figured on that, what's two point six million for ten thousand square feet? And the annex was a little over twenty thousand square feet. And when you do the math and you subtract off the ARCA funds, the only difference is we are paying under a million dollars more for a head of the space than what we would have over here. And that was done behind our backs, getting a architectural drawing, thank you.
But it's time to start to say that the commissioners hired us to do a master plan, which was preliminary studies for and the annex. I want to introduce our team, Rachel Simmons, Michael Bojtas, all the architek- corporation for architects and designers or engineers. And we spent a lot of time interviewing people throughout the entire courthouse to find out what the needs were and reviewing all the conditions at the annex, same time to prepare a plan for what's presented. From that, we received approval to move forward to do further analysis and schematic design of the annex building and what we're going to present today that we've shared with you is some concept preliminary plan of the way the annex building will be used. The reason for this is because to do the work in the courthouse, to take out all the asbestos, to take out all of the dangerous contamination, excessive wraparound, all the pipes to re-plumb the building with a new mechanical system to make this building safe to actually meet A D A requirements that are required so you can use the full courthouse for many different activities. We don't dare leave people in the courthouse during this kind of construction. It's dangerous to you, dangerous to the people here in courthouse, there's a tremendous liability. Not to mention it costs a lot more money to build around people than it does moving away, whether it's to the annex or some other place. I will introduce Rachel Simmons and Michael Bojtas to describe more of the detail of what we're doing.
The main idea of moving everybody to the annex is find suitable temporary spaces for them to occupy during the construction. We are operating under that construction taking about a year long complete. And we are trying to make sure that all the departments have their bare minimum net within the annex. That's what we are studying under. If another, you know, we can cross that, we can get there. But so we're utilizing all three levels, the basement, the main level of Maple Corner, the annex, and all the upstairs. Like Michael Conley mentioned, that is that the case there being an elevator to access all three floors, which is in fact, they did the design.
Well, I would, the basement always on the second floor, so we can have A D A, find access to every single one of those floors. So probably those, we just find the floors. We have taken into consideration what's required.
Also, the mechanical systems have to be redone out of the annex to properly meet all the needs of the different departments. It used to be a restaurant, you could eat a whole room, bringing some of those rooms up in the office in, and that requires different eating, as well as there being multiple issues with that that have to be addressed.
Do you want me to touch on that now?
These are important elements. We don't need to talk in every detail, I'd like to talk.
The mechanical and electrical systems in that building are more built appropriate for the building when it was built at that time. If it's no longer a restaurant, it needs to be repurposed into something else, often for the coming, you know, years associated with the county. Things have to be reworked. And because this was a restaurant, there's not the use of it was drastically different. A lot of the systems that are in that building now are not even, they're not commercial grade systems, they're residential grade systems. If you've been up in the annex, you can see the spaghetti bowl of flexible ductwork. I mean, that's not even your house. Heating and cooling systems are built with a higher quality than that. So to repurpose this building, new infrastructure is going to be required. The systems that are there now are they don't provide home required ventilation, the type of occupancy that it would be. The systems are residential in grade, not commercial. They're inefficient compared to what a new system would provide. And you won't get anywhere near the level of control, potential one, some temperature space control. And the same with the electric system, what you have in there. At the time, it was built met its purpose under this new occupancy. It'll be a lot easier to pull it out and put it in the way it's supposed to be put in with new firearm systems, power, data that's up to current, you know, cat six standards, not not what's there now. It's obsolete. Fire protection systems, life safety system. Basically, if we're going to repurpose this building for use in the coming decades by the folks here, it needs to be brought up to current building standards so that it's safe and provides the, you know, the environment you're going to expect in that building. That's kind of a high level overview without digging into the weeds. Any, that makes sense to everybody? Any questions regarding that? I don't know if you guys know, it's that's more high level.
If you want to proceed further with the detail, it's nice to hop at this point and let you strike some more features.
Next steps for the scene, new sessions and where we're at.
Does anybody have any questions on what users are being planned for the annex? And this program that, program and concept that are, or
So basically, the concept is, it's when you go to do the courthouse, which we don't know when that's going to be because the cost alone, I don't know that the tax payers can handle that because we have two school systems in this county that are going to raise the taxes of everyone this year and next year. You go, Paul. So let me finish, let me finish, let me, let me finish. So originally, the annex was supposed to be used for nine one one, the corner, possibly the health department and something else. So we're now using it. The purpose will be to move everybody out of the courthouse to renovate the courthouse. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a timeline on when we want to do that?
Renovation time door, they just started me, they don't make the corner, I mean, we already are. The timeline is to to the renovations to the annex to make it so that people can move to the annex.
Yeah.
Then the courthouse renovation starts at that point and would take here. And at that time, when the renovation, the courthouse is finished, people can move back to the courthouse.
Do we have a first idea on what the cost is actually going to be?
For?
For each, each individual building.
So just like any project, everything must be fully designed, project to take it out of the bid, right? And so under V O T, we're, we actually have flexibility to be able to do that. Now we can provide that, and that's based on a program and first square foot number right now. But that's why there's that call up right pause, which you guys have been debating, is you can't, you can't go out and have specifications for a contract to bid on unless yet the project is done. So today we're presenting a program, which is basically blocking, right? And then we got to fully design all the systems and finish the design, which is that's what part of that spoken cost is. So then under V O T, you provide what's called a guaranteed maximum price, for which you have zero change orders. And that's the price we must live under. So we're working to, that's what this is, to give a check on our current estimate and our current and the current plan to make sure everybody's on the same page. So we can move forward to where we can set a guaranteed maximum price, G M P.
Okay, so you said a guaranteed maximum price. I'm assuming if the project falls underneath that, we're going to go with the lower number, correct?
Wait up, what do you mean?
If the project falls underneath your.
If we set a G M P like that, say one million dollars and the project comes in at nine, nine hundred thousand.
Right.
So we're at risk to deliver the project at one million dollars. Now, your, the attorneys can talk through the agreement, which is called public agreement or buy agreement, to negotiate with all shared savings. But that's how that, how that, because we're committing to a number based on bids and discussions that we have, okay? So we're at risk to deliver at that moment, right? So there is what's called shared savings where the county and the team can share if we deliver the project lower than what we set the price at at the whole design.
Okay, awesome. In that, that agreement, are you going to have a timeline that has to be finished by?
Yep. Yep. Unlike design mid build where you're going to have lots of change orders, the project timeline can slip for months. Under this delivery method, we're actually at risk to deliver at a specific time for a specific price, which with no, what's called contract change. Now, the county can deliver what's called owner directed change orders. You wanted to add square foot feet to the building, you decided that you wanted to go, you changed something that you, that was it's called an owner directed change order. That could happen, but at, we're at risk to deliver this set of drawings at this price at this date. That's why so many communities are and kind of using bill of operating transfer because it shifts the risk from you, the county, to the developer.
So do you take possession of the county property and the V O T?
No. We get a construction easement to build the improvements. And then the improvements are transferred to the owner through a contractual agreement, but we do not take ownership of them. I'd be happy to at some point, if you guys wanted to counsel me and come do a full V O T presentation, I do commissioners conference. Do it at the theme, which is the cities and towns conference, and also the township conference. Do this often to help educate people on the delivery, on this delivery method, because it is unique. But Clinton County is using that, Hamilton County, Montgomery County, we built their annex this way. If you happen to visit their annex. Great project, gave it under budget. And actually, we already, we had savings on that project. They were able to buy furniture, picture and equipment with the savings we had on it. So I think that it's, it's a great way to deliver a project. I'm actually an elected official as well. And so the biggest challenge for me and my career has been projects that have gone over budget or over, over the due date. And this is the delivery method to solve that problem because we're being tragically obligated to deliver on time. Kelly, this is a step by step process. Like what, what we're doing here today is the first step of probably three, right? To show you concepts of what the direction that the design team is thinking and basically seek consensus, right? That we're on the right track, we're not on the right track, let's, let's move the corner here and
Well, I, I think the commissioners are on one page and we're on a different page because we thought, we thought that and correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we were doing a county highway building first.
I think that's what we've talked about. County Highway, we're out to the health and, and speed that first.
So that's why we're all sitting up here a little confused.
I understand that.
It could be done at the same time.
At one box. Found central twenty five percent increase this year. It's going to go up next year. And there are fifty two percent poverty rate at the school this year, forty eight percent in found central.
And ready to go to. For the solar campaign.
See, wait. I can tell you that. We put a war to it. We're not going to accept any E R A resolutions for a tax abatement for one year.
Has nothing to do with what you some dolphin can come in, they don't, if they don't want your tax abatement, they can come in, carry it. And then we walk away from thirty four, thirty, thirty two million dollars. Go ahead. That's your call. That you pay for all these projects. And see, none, no.
Like people are going to move out of this county.
So, and this goes for any delivery, however you plan it. Construction manager is advisor, which we know, we, you're learning how well we give them that delivery. Construction manager at risk and then bill operator. So the base of the design, you start out with a program, which talks about the, sort of like this, the square footage. Where, what departments are they going where, right? How much square footage each department has, where generally they are in the building. Okay, that's the first phase. Then you take it to schematic design. Now you have a lot more defined. You're starting to find some two scenes and the, and the drawings and the architectural drawings, right? Fast forward, then you get to what's design development level of drawings. That's where all the site would have been defined. You know, then your general building systems, you have much, much more defined in the drawings. And as you get further along in the design, the, the costs become more known. There's less uncertainty, right? And then what's called a contingency and allowance for unknown streams. And then you get to construction documents. That's where every single little thing is going to be defined in the drawings. So a, a, a mason or bidding this work will know each little thing that they need to put a number to. And you have the most accurate number there. That reduces the risk significantly for all involved because everything's so defined. Anytime you do a project, you're going to pay an architect to get to programming, all the way to construction documents, levels of design. And also then you have your, there's substantial extension in engineering. That cost is varying anywhere from six to ten percent of the total project cost you're moving forward with. And that's industry standard. You can't build, you can't build anything in county government without going through that design process. And it doesn't matter if it's this county, Vermillion County or Montgomery County. There, you're generally going to pay that same percentage of the total project cost to have an architect and engineer design. That's just the realities of what we live with as elected leaders and are trying to build or, or renovate a public building.
So, so I know you're waiting on an okay to move forward to do, I assume, the bidding process.
Well, we got, we got, we got, we're not even anywhere near the post to design, so.
Do you have any idea, a rough idea on what this is going to cost?
And did you, did you put, because of the square foot cost?
Yeah, if, yes, square footage costs.
So we always like to do a low or mid and a high. Because right now, it's, it's, these are just, we're just taking, okay, we're doing Clinton County's annex. We know the total project cost is X. We know that the building's X amount is worth B, so we develop what's called a first word foot cost. Thumb in the air. If lumber doesn't, prices don't change tomorrow, whatever. This is generally what the first word foot costs are. So we provided estimates. It's a little bit more involved than that, but to simplify what happens at this level of estimating, that's basically what we're doing. So we've developed a, basically a low, a mid and a high cost based on many, that will depend on many factors, right? So, so we can go through some of those now if you'd like.
Yeah. Yeah, with the help of, well, Allison and Marasco and trade markets in the area, including all the construction contracts, temporary trailers. Construction administration will be, it's around a range between six point eight, seven point six.
Montgomery County's was a similar size. They bought a former senior living facility, had the same issues with the mechanicals. There was a lot of residential mechanical systems. Five of the same issues. It was, it was a tough renovation. Their scheme then, which we finished two years ago at five point five. That with the trending in boss escalations, anything you don't do today, it's going to be significantly more each year that you're going to do it. At the time in two thousand twenty, prices were escalating at twenty percent a year. Now they've gone back down a little bit, maybe low double digit. But anytime you can expect at least a ten percent increase every year of trade and construction cost just due to inflation and the tight labor market.
And our biggest concern is, we weren't even discussed, it wasn't discussed with the council. We're the ones that have helped to plan it together. And the public is, is screaming that they didn't know anything about it. They haven't been invited to any meetings to talk about this. And.
We've had our presentation at every one of our meetings with council.
And not all of us were invited. And we should have all been invited.
That would be a meeting.
And, and that's the only meeting I've invited to, I haven't posted. And then a lady from the public was there and got confronted for being at that meeting. And all those meetings should be, none of this should be done behind the scenes.
Right.
The public needs to know what's going on. And now we're going to have two new commissioners come January. And they may have a whole different idea of what, what they want to do. And I think we don't be waiting until the new commissioners come in and make a decision.
You're wrong.
Different, you can handle it many different ways, but and this is why I believe how the commissioners are operating, but you create what's called a buy committee. And that committee makes, is represented by many different stakeholders in the, in the community and sort of is that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of discussions back and forth. And a lot of work that's done to get to just this point. But, you know, we're just at the conceptual programming stage of design. So there's still a lot of opportunity for community and other stakeholders, but.
So do we have?
That's the point of getting one, you know, we have talked about getting some of the castle, you know, all that and I think you guys have some suggestions as far as we should be on that.
Brandon, do you have a comment?
I have a question. And Baker's building, the most creative project cost and funding is that annex building costs four million and five hundred thousand and cash on hand, one million three hundred thousand. Four million and five hundred thousand is a long way from six point eight to seven point two.
Yep. So then remember, you're dealing with first word foot cost. There's a lot of things you can do in each one of those square feet, the, to change the.
Well, what's the difference between, we're, we're having to get this money. They don't understand that.
I'm not, I'm not for sure what Baker's building is using, but they have to come up with some illustrations. And usually pick a different, in my experience, I've worked with Baker's building, I've worked with them all over with other advisors.
With other advisors, they, what they're trying to do is provide information to the county council, the county commissioners. That if you spend this much, here's, here's the effect of the taxpayer, you've spent that much, here's the effect of the taxpayer. And then eventually, you know, you get, you get to a point where the, you come back and decide, and which project to move forward with. And what, what amount of money that they're going to spend on this project. If the council and the commissioner said, we can only spend three point five million dollars on the project, whatever that number is. We can only give them a certain guaranteed maximum price at that number. And then we just determine what we can put into the project to get to that number. That, that's unlike a designed and built, designed and built, you would try to design into whatever number you're looking for. Maybe you don't know what the cost is that they bid it on day. So this allows us to design and figure out what we're gonna put in the building to the amount of money that the. The commissioners or county council are willing to spend, then that's the budget at the end of the day. So these are all conceptual right now, so if, if Baker Tilly and council determine that they can only spend X amount of dollars. Then that's, that's, you can only live to what, what's in your means, right? So, do you have a relevant, more important value?
Yeah, my name is Greg Bossano, Baker Tilly municipal advisor, our, our, our municipal advisor for county. But we did prepare, prepare some numbers here, um, and, and you're, uh, four point five million is what we just announced, but they, no, we. We're not estimating project costs, we're just writing up the, the run scenarios and run numbers filed to us. You know, you were told to, you know, run it four point five million, just as, so these are illustrations and, and to send, you know, that's right. We, our job is kind of to look at this, look at what the financing, the costs, how.
You don't want him swinging the hammer, so you don't want me telling you how much you can let go of this. And it, yeah. Yeah.
So basically, Greg, are you saying that the four point five is what the county could. Quote-unquote stomach to pay, is that what, is that what the four point five is, or is this just a random number?
Oh, I mean, no, it's not, no, man, it's not necessarily what the county, it's, 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 um, this is not necessarily the county put or put by it. Um, this is more just a number we provided to run this, so it's purely just an illustration issue. If it was a four point five million dollar, dollar. What would be needed to fund, so it's not necessarily what county can have been out for, it's just one.
So, you know, eight, seven, one, six is the most, is the more realistic number. Based on a first word foot cost and the.
The way that the product is defined.
Right. It's not set to something. And, and like I said, the last two or three meetings, we should sell the building instead of putting that kind of money into it. Uh, and again. Two new commissioners, that may be there, maybe they wanna sell it. So, we don't think we can afford that kind of money right now. Our, our town, our. County general revenue has dropped one and a half million dollars so far this year, and we've got two ambulances paid for. We've talked about it, I think everybody, we all have voted that. Kevin Highway Garage is our top. In fact, it's, uh, the fastest right now. Anybody else want to?
Yeah, yeah, uh, on the court. We have talked with council that we do need someone better. So, and one came up with words. Okay, what I want you to say to them, like, how, how can we put rope on their? Age back up there, whatever, see what I'm getting at?
Yes, uh, we, uh, we did.
Get a car before we're on the year. We get it built to the standard rate.
Well, I mean, yeah, let me explain. If they have something, they can replace this roof as it is. And, um, get a warranty, I don't know if they want a warranty, they make certain they have the last, and the first thing they're. The trails they use are gonna be at least twenty years, uh, before we start athletes, another problem. So, we go in and put the roof on now, then you come back in a couple of years and you put. The mechanical system into the building and you have mechanical units that go on the roof, you got a chimney, you gotta tape down and cap off and. Then you have to re-warm the whole roof, you have to go back and patch the roof again, two years down the road, so we had to pay. More money to put the roof on again, you can do it, it's, it's, I wanted to make it. Make sure the castle aware, have the various extra costs involved.
Shouldn't that, that chimney come down when any roof put on?
Chimney should come down.
Okay. Cause we have leak each of their, uh, by the clerk's office and.
Right.
You know, we spent half a million dollars restoring these year olds and. So roofs got the effects.
And there's leaking coming in other places too, and that is certainly one of the major places and. Taking that chimney down, capping that chimney, putting, taking the old roof off, turning the roof, exishing insulation in it and pop the flashing around the. Skylight system and around other openings and around the parapet walls, around the perimeter of the building, all of that's very important to do, I agree with that. But no matter when you put the roof on, I'm just saying, you come back and do other renovations later and change the mechanical system. And put your mechanical units on the roof and you put holes in the roof, it's there. We have to go back and patch and then put a new one, it's possible.
See, most time, most time what happens is, is either people are, are aware that they have a warranty or they do something after the whole roof has been installed. That other work and then avoids the warranty.
Well, we're sitting on avoided warranty right now, that this roof was put on how many years ago?
And, and it's been less than twelve years, which.
Yeah.
That essentially did, and. We're, we're talking to Tipton County about the exact same thing right now, so we're helping them with any of this and some other things and. They, they have, they have a swimming pool, where their whole record is basically catching water right now. And, um, you know, these are historic, beautiful buildings, but they cost a lot of maintenance. You still wanna throw good money after bad, doing something which is a void to a location, they order your mortgage and have to go back and. Throw good money out.
And then, like, how do you address it, crack the floor, let the treasures off the scene?
Oh, yeah, part of the cost we had estimated in the preliminary and the master plan was to repair. That whole floor is cracked all the way from one side to the other, struck under there. Here's an estimate for not only the cost of repair, but also there's cost for during redecoration. It's not a terrible cost, but it has to be done because that door is gonna fall in somebody and it's, there's gonna be a lot of metal going on. And it's, um, all the windows leak here, no thermal break, there, there's no way to let that, some water coming down through the window under into the wall. And it's another source of leaking that happens, you got asbestos in every pipe and the attic and all the pipes inside the walls that are curving. Boiler system and the, uh, radiator following through the building, that asbestos gotta come out. Those pipes gotta come out, people leaking on people, leaking out, destroying your artwork. So our mechanical system not only to be more efficient, but also to take away all the leaking problems that happen. Free the law, destroying your art, making the air un, un-greedy volunteer, this is the contaminated atmosphere. All of that has to pay, like, it's gonna make this a place where you can work and have people work and serving and having, serving and pay for the community.
You know, this is the icon of our county. And I don't want to see it diminish.
I know, yeah.
But. The cost is what. Is hindering us moving forward because the residents are taking a beating. Already and I just don't wanna pass that on to them right now. But I do see it maybe that it needs to be.
And whether. Our plan, master plan, which is saying, please move the people out and report to the minister and all this nasty construction aid on. We don't want people, maybe in the office, all having the lives through construction, uh, then. And not only is it dangerous that the, the people are not gonna be able to do their jobs appropriately. They, they have to go somewhere else for the mechanics or some other place, but I understand that, I think that's. Our goal in the master plan is to stay, scan the master plan, probably the worst is prepared to offer. The price for preparing a car has come to be less without people, and, and, and people.
So, do you guys have anybody in the, the highway bill?
Roger.
The, uh. He is known that he's a producer. Every year. Ten, twenty percent increase. Do, I think, I think you're talking about the property tax rate is what you're mainly concerned about with the taxpayers, right? Since it sounds like two schools have done a, either operating or capital referendum and added to the rate. Um, there is a possibility, uh, that Baker Tilly could investigate using local income tax. So it doesn't affect, uh, property taxes, particularly for those who are, um, seniors and on the extended time. Um, we get local income taxes as a source for repayment, uh, to fund the project. Um, I'm, and I know that they have done that, uh, but then that means it doesn't go on the property tax rate. Then you're now, you know, able to do some of this work. Uh, to keep her kind of pay significantly more in the future. But again, you're taking money out of their pockets. And costs are so high now. And the poverty level is so high in our county right now. You're, you're taking income tax out of their pockets, spending money for those who, you just can't do that. For those who, for those who do, but, um, the rate or the amount that you'd be taking out now. For the taxpayer to see, you're adding ten percent to that, that taxpayer will have to fund every year that you, that they wish to do something. So, in, in ten years, that cost is gonna be significantly more out of the taxpayer's pocket than it would be today. That's just simple time value money and how construction costs work. And then all of what our tax revenues are gonna be, state tax revenues were down twelve percent last month from projected revenues. So what's that gonna do to us and layoffs in over in Quaker? Is that gonna be, all right, um, I.
Give me a, a cost estimate on the county highway garage, have you done any of that?
No, we, no, and, um, we've been sort of, um. We've done, our team has done all this, have, have done all this work. Um, and we have not, and, um, maybe our tour has done, they maybe even built or paved on the paths. We have a team of, I mean, they're, they're a nationwide expert, they're probably one of the best in the business at, uh, at, uh, courthouse designs. Um, we're doing two hundred and fifty million dollars of DOT right now, we have a team of experts that have been working for this county. And with no expectation, uh, with no bill. And so, but the highway garage is not something that we've been procured to do. I mean, we're doing not much of them, we can put a quick number to it. I thought I saw that in one of the figures that was handed us for three projects. The. That was probably in architecture, early engineer estimate, I don't know if it did.
Definitely not with Baker Tilly, since highway garage.
Okay, seven point seven million for a highway garage, yeah. The city of Covington is putting up a twelve thousand square foot city garage. Eight bays for four hundred thousand dollars, well, that's not interior of it. But, yeah, so.
Well, I mean, the comparison is of what the city of Covington's doing with what we're wanting to do entirely, Roger, do you want to touch on that?
Uh, beautiful barn, you know, I'm Roger Ray, the county county engineer, um, we, I do design for these. Large full barn, we just built one, that's gonna be three times the size of how we do it, CSI and North Bronx, so. Uh, I'm comfortable when I, when I spoke with you, I'm comfortable taking that project, I think we get a lot of savings. Um, I think the initial budget was seven million dollars, so then, um, my initial run at it, we're gonna look at. Those five million dollars, five and a half million dollars. Uh, we're able to reduce the engineering fees, uh, ignore architectural pain. Um, except for the vertical design, which I was on track to. I felt comfortable taking on that target, I've done this project before multiple times, I do not feel comfortable taking on the courthouse. I do not feel comfortable taking on the annex because I am not a remodeler, this, this is way beyond what I'm able to do. But a new building like the garage, I was more than willing to put my hand up to say, I'll, I'll take care of that and hopefully get a lot of.
How many sparks here are you talking about?
This, this thing is not originally presented, it's three buildings for the salt barn, but the salt barn is not part of the cost, it's separate, it's already costed out. Um, a fueling, fueling facility. Uh, one of the large buildings was gonna be mostly cold storage. Um, and we're talking about taking it up to the digital cost, the other building was gonna be half. Half garage, half office space, with a mess, a messy area in order to, I'm not sure, have office space in that convenience. So again, you know, depending on, when, when I spoke to Jason last. We went with the full money, you know, this is what our dream is, but if we take. The big building out, we can probably drop the project down with three and a half million dollar.
Are you talking the cold storage?
Sorry, man.
The cold storage building?
And the idea there was that when you have the full storage facility. Where these guys are at, the wall is black and.
I went in there, I was in there for thirty minutes and I had to get out, I heard a bus burning in my device room. And I was.
Compounds are all over the facility, so, and they, I'm a, they should not be in there. That I think what we can put together, new facility, the wall ended, directed on, and it, that's a lot of people who believe that used to work there, they're coming with a shoe shed.
Right.
So.
That's why we were in agreement that we.
It's a good building and that can be maintained of the whole facility, they want to put their trucks in there, their craters, whatever, they use the new facility for the meeting, uh, they did that. Yeah.
I think you should talk to Brad Freeman. About, for what he's building, a city garage building. And Jason told me he didn't even need that many bays of the city.
And then I'm giving that, I think, you know, we kind of, you know, when all this started. And the planning was up in the air, the commission told me to stop for a minute, figure things out, that's where I am, I'm in stop mode. Once we figure it out, I can re-engage Jason, we can get with what needs, needs for function. That we're gonna reassessing and go on there, it may be, it may be one building that's smaller, I know I'm gonna need a fueling bay, I know we're gonna need the salt pump. The building, we didn't need the salt. But right now our salt facility, we should care from this.
That's what I, yeah. Yeah.
Well. And that's for another day to, to talk about the garage, but we need to decide whether we want this project stopped. Until we figure out our financials and have conversations with. You all know who the new commissioners will be involved, but they haven't been.
Or councilman. Right, it'd be, it'd be out of the.
Excuse my voice. Gentlemen, thank you. For all your plans, the work into it, I didn't miss one thing in your, in your booklet. I didn't see the name counts. When you listed everybody. Who you talked to, I didn't see the work counts. That kind of led flight for me to be today. To fund. Let me make myself. But. To make it real clear, we like to fund other things within the end. Reason is unexpected. We don't wanna do that. But this came down to the point today. Everybody has to know. That we will not forget. As the law, we want our. And it should have been. I attended one meeting with you, Mr. Collins. And that was back when you were in some figures and I think Rachel. Thank you, I'm sorry. Can be allowed.
My ears don't work as well.
So here, here's what I'm saying. Is that we don't feel like we want to spend that kind of money for the end. Yeah, we did buy it. And there was a period of time in there, a lot of foot drag. And a lot of consultations and a lot of money. Guess what? We lost him, I'll tell you that. I don't love that. But I'm just telling you, foot got a little bit. We had a problem in this county, we won't take care of it. Do we need a repair? You there? Do we need a new garage? Yes. And can we find that doing, I want more estimate, I don't wanna see our garage, six million dollars out there. And I went through, I went through. And I went through, I went through. That was a premium dollars. They had everything you want, of which we could do that. And I told Jason that and I resolved a meeting. But this is bound to count eighteen thousand people. We have to live. We only pull it so much money. Yeah, we have that. We should do. Yeah, we can flow a bond. We sure can. We also, we got the gym that's coming down. I want to get it. I want to do one thing right in this county and get it done. That's what I want. That's what I want. The other thing is. I want to put a roof in this. Because in effect, I mean, I heard what you said. Why do we have to put a basement?
Having designed that system there.
I, I, that would be a problem. Also, I'll be here. I may not be here. I'm telling you. And I understand great plan. We need more estimates. Not made it come through the company, right? We got the bill. What we want. This council is. If we don't want to fund that. They thought about selling it. That hasn't come up yet. But you know why you should really turn that. I don't turn it around. There's another thing, Mr. Collins, that you need to know the best Mr. County Commissioner. When we started out and built a hill. We built a mansion. We got nine one one stuck in this building and it should have been out. We paid thousands of dollars to put a new debit door to protect it. We got two police to walk in this car to protect it. We're paying for that. We just out of salads. I don't want to help you, Ron. We have to be, be, be in the medical building and our position. And it's your project. In the past year, I fell the same. And I look at the total amount of money that we had lost. We lost about thirty-three percent of thirty-six percent. He said, well, that's not very much, but in this county it's a lot. So that's why we got a lot of money. Now all that money we need to do all of it. Yeah, you said we're going to get some, we have to agree something. And we can't go on white. That's my fault. I, I think that we don't really need a lot. A new garage for this county. And I think we ought, ought to be a state garage. I think we ought to put up something that this taxpayer know what to do. Instead of putting up a twenty percent. And say, boy, that's nice. We got a problem, that's all. So why am I being a little bit? But I believe. I want to get it done with them. I don't think we can afford to give me anything. Look at the council. And my focus, I don't. I applaud you. For your, for your plans. I applaud you. For bringing in. Your inflation and your right. But you know what? You're going there. We got to take care of us. You know that by being on council. You got to take care of people. I appreciate your number, Jason. But when I looked at that bottom row today, which page? That's all it's in. So I think what we need to do, what we can do, we need to discuss this. We need to discuss it. Otherwise, he wouldn't be coming in here. Having faces white face saying, hey, we've done this, we've done that, we could do this. Get it yet? And that's all.
It's impossible and the process includes support with you, more communication, working with all the people that have both pay and live in a park with it. And we understand that you have done this, but we're not concerned about.
Concealed. And I also appreciate you coming closer.
I appreciate it.
By the way. But I, I said. And gentlemen, to end it, and. We are, this is a government, the. And we are. But it says here. Everybody was mentioned except. Here we go. Within the process of these options being developed, it is critical to consider. The needs of each individual department. And so on. If you lost you, I want you, you're exactly. They're late. We don't need to, we need new ones. That we, that has been affected in the results, but then we add it up to a little input in the decision, department heads. Commissioners. And other. Is critical throughout this process. I did not see a council. This is my project in the state of Indiana that okayed and funds every project. Every bill that's through this county is important. That's just to be established. And if we don't do that, we are not operating very well for the people. I thank you, sir, for listening to me. I thank you, county, for listening to me. I don't expect to change my life.
Um, I'm not saying that was an oversight and I'm sure. We did bring to your attention, do we include the council, did we not? But we were meeting. But you were.
You, you and Tom and I and Kelly and. And Steve was Jim and. Denise, but we, we're. Times involved.
Because we wanted the council involved and when, when we were meeting, I did have at least one council, not two. Council members.
Really, I really see the other night. How it was made when two people meet, start a poor council, that book, it was, I'm, I'm, so that needs to be with you. The best commission. Then we know, we did have a couple of times. But I heard this other night. In the home unit, it's okay. For one or two people to be, oh, that's just wrong. You get a lot of, but then. I want that input as well. And I can get it done in the meeting. So again, that's why.
And that's what work sessions, Tom. I mean, and there was. You know, we weren't leaving anybody out. I know Jeff had communicated with some of the others. I don't know who he communicates to, you know, the council. But, you know, the intent was not to keep it a secret from all of you, because we did try to reach out. I reached out, I've had a conversation with Dale. I've had a conversation with you. There's been some things, I've reached out to Dudley, not so much Denise or Jim, I have not. I've reached out to Kelly or Jeff. Jeff has been the person of contact because he's experienced, um, working with Monvalley. And he's the one that volunteered to meet with the team. To move, to see how far we want to go, to give the information. There were work sessions. That's it. There was no decisions made, no votes. Um, and, and we, we have to have work sessions in order to get to. What Rick was talking about and Justin, you know, we have to get to a schematic design in order to know how do we want to proceed.
You had a schematic.
But it cost money.
You had a schematic design on the annex.
No, it wasn't. It hadn't gotten there because the original architect sat on the design for a year.
But you had some draw, where you want to build schematic or whatever. It was drawn and they had. But, but then it stopped. And so therefore, that's the reason why.
And that's when it was recommended that we have architurists that worked on our master plan. And so they had already done some of the work for the courthouse and the annex because they needed to have a plan as far as. When we start working on the courthouse, which is going to be a huge project, where are they going to go? There's nothing available, so the, we need to get the annex done to move people from courthouse there. Some can work from home because there may not be enough space. Or it's recommended that we have trailers in the, in the lot there at the annex. For departments to function, to serve the people.
I understand.
I mean, that, that's been planned. All along, and we've had input, Jeff's input. A, a lot.
But you haven't had the whole council's input. We haven't, and that's for the public's input. And, and that's the problem. People perceive everything done in C P C in this county. And they're upset about it. And it's got to stop.
Well, we, we discussed things at our meetings, you know, that we had met with architurs on the master plan and this is where, you know, there's their findings. And that was emailed to everybody, uh, the conditions of the courthouse, the conditions of the annex, and what is going to be needed, you know, to make it usable space. We got to get all that worked in, in order to get to um a boat on moving forward and that's all we've been working on.
Brenda, I think it's, it's much, it's much longer. Because. We're not. We are, we don't have. But our people together, this is what we need to do. You always danger shout. You know, we need to have things together. That, that. Medical building and the jail and the nine one one. And even other departments can be right up there. We have room. It's not going to cost millions of dollars to include those people.
Talking about nine one one and up in jail. Outside of the jail.
Outside the jail.
Tom to the jail. But it's separate. And, and that was shot down by the previous commissioners. Well, we got new commissioners, we've got new council and. I could never, I could never understand why it was never done that way. Um, I'd like to call the people in here that decided that because I think they'd love to hear how everybody feels about not including that in jail. At the time it was being built because it could have been done pennies on the dollar. Time, I agree. It should have been out there. It should have been out there when the ambulance, but those commissioners at that time uh. Pulled back and were there that, did they not, Brad?
And I know Tim didn't have anything to do with that because I've had conversations with Tim. When I was not on this council, when this jail was being built. He, you know, we had conversations about that and Tim went out of his way. To do investigation into finding a company that this is all they did was build jails and they could have built it for less. Than what it's built for right now. And they chose the higher bid. And went with a company that did not build as many of jails as the company, they never built one.
So I would not disagree with you. I think, I always thought nine one one should have been out there. Maybe not in the same building, but. Yep, so. That really wasn't the thought to do that, you know, so when we have the annex, we got a joint meeting with Warren County and it was all agreed, you know, that. Hey, if the block is, take this thing, this would be a perfect location for nine one one to move, blah, blah, blah. I mean, a lot of us, you know, I mean, some of your newer ones were not in that conversation, but that was our plan at the time.
And Warren County was agreeing, agreed to pay toward an extra every month towards renovation of that. And now we just presented a contract between commissioners here and, and their commissioners. That isn't even going to cover a third of our costs. She says three hundred and seventy thousand is what Warren County should be paying us and your limit's like three hundred and twenty-five.
And that's a lot more than we. That's like we done.
No, but medical costs have gone up, salaries have gone up.
And, and we are supposed to be complicating, but they wanted, we wanted to do two years to see what kind of um. Fluctuation in the budget was, um. So I don't know.
Fifty percent of all.
I agree. It should have been fifty fifty, but they decided to do the flat rate and we agreed.
She does not share the jail issue, but I would share, we would be repulsed. But I would share, I had a jail cost nine thousand six million. By three different parts. Because three months, they cost the taxpayers another eighty million dollars. That had people backdooring me on a campaign with the meeting because they wouldn't stand up for what's right. That jail should have had dispatch center in it. We didn't need many. It should have been built in that jail built. They could also have added a corner office for an additional cost, but they chose not to. And I got beaten, you like to pick up people backdooring me because some of the people went on with the tax. We had people moving the tax percentages to show it's not a cost. One yard. We will straight out the lot. And that came a little bit. We had council members who didn't want to build a jail. They didn't want to pass through the jail over there. So we waited another eight years and built a jail, thought almost double. And I heard some of the architects, whoever it was, they did. That's the place all the time, they're, they just dug it.
That was one thirty dollars, Bobby. When they redid that jail, it was one thirty dollars, closed it down. Cause during the construction, we were there, it had to be placed fossil to the hell. So there was huge amount of language that happened. So as we all, we ended up.
And we faced the lawsuit every day with the little Indians that have separate rights that would be anymore. We catered water for one step and the other. So when we talk about the jails, some of the decisions being made here, let's be transparent. We have a back. That we have jail people meeting on the side and not telling you. And I still might remember, maybe I didn't get re-looked at, but I know what went on. I closed war. I met the FBI. Because money, in a different situation, it was federal money. Was trying to be fun because people's not having a mission soon or even, I still have this. If somebody wants to see what we glad producer. And we didn't call the FBI, we didn't go to the prosecutor because they would have been very much, we'll see it like the people. And everyone rated that for the negative indictment, the negative bridge. And I lived here most of my life. Not just the police, I went over to the taxpayer. And I don't like the law, I'm meeting because of all this division where so much. They required the jail, I was told their data jail not even complete. They haven't had a nine good foot in. So fuck one too many now. Should have done rights first, man. So that's what I guess, being honest with the taxpayers and the broken shit.
Really excelled the past eight months. Started all about close fifteen dollars. But I guess there's not very many people who do that work.
Right, because they just come down another quarter, train all night, and make the flush still. It should have been the number one property that you, the city, the city of Beards for problems. And it had been discussed, but I can tell you, it was done wrong. That joke, seventy minutes, all looked like.
Can I make the statement that Deb tells in the both of those things? So, you know, when we had that joint meeting at the annex and we talked about it, getting, right, you know, taking the. And we talked about this project, went over a general program when Jason someone was there for Baker Tilly. When we talked about planning for this project. I, I would go back to that meeting and some of the advice that was provided at the meeting. I would look at as a council and commissioners in this county, what you want to spend. What, what are you willing to, to bond for or to spend based on your sources and uses? How that impacts the taxpayer. You decide that first. Now you have a menu of various different options on what you can spend that money on. And you generally have an idea of what some of those costs are, knowing that you can, it's called value engineer. The design or what's, what the current budget is. You can value engineer that. Down to a number that you're willing to live with and within the amount of money you're willing to spend. So first step. Council, decide how much you're willing to spend regardless of what your project is. Decide what you can spend and what, based on what kind of impact you're willing to politic. Decide what you can spend and what the impact, based on what kind of impact you're willing to politically and as a council willing to 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 issue. Once you have that number, now you have a menu of options, you can decide as to what product, where you where you deploy, deploy those monies. And that's sort of what we talked about that at that joint meeting. And um with the now designed it built for the garage, you're not gonna know what that garage cost until you get your bids on bid day. These other, the courthouse using DOT, the courthouse to the annex. You'll know what that, by the time you're done with the process, you know what the cost is and it won't change. Regardless if it's one point five million dollars you decide to spend on the courthouse and the annex. Regardless, you know how much that's in the cost. So really think about those procurement methods too, because they can change the price wildly. And you can deal with the change orders and other issues depending on how you prepare. But number one, decide how much, how much willingness as a body that you're willing to spend. And what that impacts, and you go from there.
I looked at it. I saw you know. Of that meeting. You're not, you're back to one for us. No, you understand.
I, we've discussed it, we can't afford this project and we want it on hold until first year when there's new commissioners. I I I don't want to spend. I'm not gonna put that kind of money in. So is there a motion that we advise that we're putting that project on hold until it changes the menu? Well, we have. For the garage, so you just want them to know what you're willing to spend and what you're willing to borrow. So that's a step that you need to go through as a council regardless of what project you're doing.
That's exactly. Every week was a solar discussion with Baker Tilly, uh, dolphin solar. I think that will bring some different news into the room about how much money that will generate, it's gonna generate, it's certainly the gardens. So not a week, that's what I'm saying, you know.
I know. Say, the commissioners have done what the council asked them to do. We worked with these companies to to see what it was gonna cost to do these different projects. That's it, that's all we've done. Now there there's a price tag for their work that we all were aware that we were gonna be having to pay. And that's all we've done.
I I would agree with that. I mean, I came in later and I remember when they presented the master plan. And we did approve to pay to have a master plan because we had to start from somewhere. We didn't know what these projects were gonna cost. So we said, yes, go with the master plan, give us some numbers, give us an idea, like you're saying, you know, so we would do it gradually. And I think we had a motion not too long ago about another thing. And I don't know specifically saying, someone was on a conference call, they're gonna be here and said, okay, we'll approve that. But it's not a blank check. We want communication from the commissioners and we pay it gradually. And then we heard nothing more. And we were at that meeting of the annex and that was all of us because we invited all of us. And when we were there, I mean, we were there for an hour and the last five minutes was, okay, this is what it's gonna cost if we do this to the taxpayers. And immediately we were like, no, I mean, we did not want that. And we felt like then at that point, you guys went out on your own. I mean, we all felt like, stop, this is too much, we can't do this yet. And it just kept going and kept going. And there was no communication from that.
Well, there's there's nothing related to us to tell these people to.
I mean, I, we talked about it in our council meetings. I mean, I don't come to all of your committees, but I have a feeling, but I watch them, I watch every one of them. So if we are saying something in our council meeting and you don't hear it because you're not watching or you don't listen, that's not us. And that's your job. Yeah, there may be money there, I mean, it's. I think the answer of saying, we've got money from something else. And people have voted and we don't. Maybe that's not how we pay for things because we're still doing what the citizens want us to do. That's my job is to make a vote, the decision, Jason, well, people have told me they're not, not.
Actually, we should do what's best, we need to fire the county fifty one.
Agreed, and all the country forgot, the majority one way, not this way.
Okay, because they're both, there are still a lot of people out there who might not say anything because they just don't want to say anything, and then we'll get lost.
Yeah, they did, that's right.
So can I ask these guys something while everybody is here? The square footage required for the offices that are gonna be out there. Would it be cheaper to build a new building or would it be cheaper to remodel this building? The architects.
I mean, you can spend.
And I'm just asking, that building was a different location.
Yes.
Would it be cheaper to design a new building for the wires for the pudding? Than remodel, the temperature not getting one minute lower, not needing an elevator, it won't have to be registered.
So it's gonna be more, it's it's gonna be more, but it'll be a definitely more efficient building, cost less.
Cost more to build it.
Nineteen thousand, let's say.
How many square feet is? How many square?
Well, we're building like three new ones right now.
How many square feet we need for the offices that are gonna be out?
We have nineteen thousand.
To be here.
That right, nineteen.
Close to nineteen twenty, I mean, twenty twenty foot walls.
So it's with that, I mean, this is gross, this doesn't, you know, just get circulation for the followers and everything. So let's say twenty thousand square feet. Think what Lynn County's boss right now may be closer to eight one five to ninety nine.
That's how many you the more working.
That'd be nineteen thousand.
Does that happen?
Nineteen thousand. And you know, I'm using this word numbers that we hear, every county and. So we're gonna be a full square foot cost, total project cost. So you got, and then, you know, you got hard cost, trade cost, you got soft cost. That's total. Not the trade cost. And where you get the savings is when you get that close, sometimes you just have to evaluate what the operational efficiencies of the building are. So let's see, lower cost operating the building versus fresher of any of the other one. And that's usually great for decision. That's usually what drives the decision to build new.
So so Mr. Crane, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're from this town of Covington.
City.
I. My apologies. If if I'm correct, the maple corner is actually a series of portable buildings, is not.
There's portable classrooms from Africa with the Africa ice.
Right, right. So the structure itself is basically a trailer, a series of trailers, portable classrooms.
Mainly the sound.
It's in the center part. Yes, that's nice. I remember this classroom.
How how many square feet is city building, Brad?
Four thousand.
The thing, the thing that council and commission can do, look at the, on this building, it does have to be the size of the wood and the windows, it's plumbing. Commission, maybe somebody came up to me.
Could you speak up?
I said, there are needs for this building. I mean, it's it's definitely, I I walk around like Tom and and there are needs and and windows, excellent thing. Nine one one, I just went in there, um, today's Monday, Thursday. And it's it's a it's a hole, it's terrible, horrific. And uh, and it's a historic ability. So we, we're gonna have to sometime in the near future work on this building. Do we agree with that?
I agree, because you and I went up into the courtroom. And right outside the courtroom, the plaster is crumbling off the walls and the ceilings. It's laying in the hallway up there. And it's doing, on the reverse side of that room, it's doing the same thing. So there is a definite leak problem there.
And and the other thing is the plumbing, I was envious, this commissioners meeting about a month ago, a maintenance person came and they were trying to work on the bathroom, one range of the faucets. The plumber said, you're giving it, I can't get any more parts for it. Down to the end of, you know, working on this plumbing. So it it, I just wanna tell the citizens, we we have to eventually look at this thing and and work on it because it's it's gonna be in need, so.
Counselor, you're correct. And and the what's what you what you guys are dealing with as a council and commissioners is that these issues didn't happen overnight. These are issues that many of which probably started, you know, well past you guys being the lead of the issues. But this, the the continued deferred maintenance has only done it exponentially cost more and more to the taxpayers.
The other thing too, is working with the hard boy when we have school projects is they preach for uh the amount of people that are in here working right there. Gotta have fresh air. Uh, and it has to be, I don't know whether to do studies already or not. So many DM, DM, FM, and we had to do that, we had to do that. Students and and the people working there and we we, you know, fresh air. So we have to work on the age gap. I mean, that's that's just stuff to help the employees to to keep them safe. So uh, so I I get, yeah, we're we're talking, we're talking a little ahead.
You know, Jeff, you know, sorry, you're exactly right. If that study was done, the air study in this building was done a few years ago. And now you're kind of prompting that.
Right.
Compensation of this building was not, was not right.
Right.
Because it was collecting on the walls of this building.
Yeah.
And it wasn't.
I think, I mean, we we did a study, feasibility study on uh the condition, the set of the mechanical systems in this building. And they are, again, like, because this building is old, right? It was not designed for HVAC. So what you have is a lot of presidential grade systems. You see, it does begin to spread around the building. They use R twenty two, it's an obsolete refrigerant, costs over a hundred dollars a pattern. If you're ever gonna do repairs on those systems. Uh, so what the disadvantage of those systems is they bang on and off. They don't modulate efficiently. When they cycle on and off, they don't do a good job dehumidifying your building. You know, you're sitting right in front of an eighty three year old radiator with boilers that are serving it that are well past their expected service. I mean, I'm not telling you they're gonna grow tomorrow, but I am telling you they're going for it. And when they do, they'll be very expensive to 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 replace. The chimney that is being utilized, then some of your internal combustion equipment. So we were talking earlier about the roof and replacing the roof. And what they'll take down, you can't take down the chimney till the HVAC system's changed. Because it's being utilized right now. So there there's an order of operations that makes sense when you wanna start looking at some wholesale updates and maintenance associated with the building. This building has, I mean, it does not meet current codes by any stretch of the imagination, any of them. Uh, it's just because it's an old building and happens and on. When those renovations take place, you will be required to meet new ones. So which means you have to have ventilation, so that rooms become more pleasant to be in, like we were talking about as a storage. That's true, sure. Correct. So you can solve humidity issues with appropriate systems, not not the stuff you put in your house. It works for a house, it doesn't work for a special building like this. There's no room in your house at this many people. You know, they're just, they're designed different. And the systems in this building and the plumbing, they're at the end of their life. You know, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, you know, I'm gonna die in a heart, I don't know that. But they are gonna die soon. That I can tell you with a level of certainty.
And my comment is just about, oh, that's not at the end of this, I'm just, and we follow that.
Yeah, we 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 know, but again, the public needs to, we're being informed. We need, we need public meetings so the public can come in and they can say, okay, we've shown the plans that are gonna be done. This is what it's gonna cost. They they need to know all that in a public meeting. And and I'm sure when you're on the school board, your meetings were when you discussed building projects at at town central. But but everyone on the board was at your meeting.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't have any meetings behind with just a few.
At times too, but if we were forty. I give it to you. Yeah.
The the other thing, the other thing that needs to be discussed too is it's not just the the uh current situation of the building, we're out of space. And the probation, you know, it seems like they're needing that whole floor. So, you know, that is another concern, you know, that and that was the reason of the annex to move some of the offices there to free up some space here. So it's not just a renovation, you know, to fix things, we're in need of more space.
We would be in the open for this meeting. Anybody post property? No, we should know. And it's a time long like that, it's gonna be more dangerous. I don't understand why this can't, let her move on, put reinforcements in for the ACAC. You solve the problem, you stop the deterioration. If you don't have a warranty, big flipping deal. It's fixed, you just go fix, okay? And then you stop the deterioration of the building by replacing it. And you have to take the chimney down, oh my gosh, we gotta take the chimney down. Well, take the chimney down, it's okay.
Thank you. And we all, we all agreed, Brenda, that we needed more space. That the whole project behind buying a former. But it was gonna be a million dollar project.
And we know, and so it's like, none of us knew that we were gonna have to have an elevator. None of us knew that we were gonna have to have new sprinkler system and some other things. I'll I'll agree. But it's not like we were hiding any of that stuff. We didn't know until it was brought to our attention.
I think it's a beautiful plan. So when you learn those things, that's when you regroup and say, maybe this isn't the best idea and we need to figure out some different. Not, well, we started, we gotta keep going. Because I feel like that's where we're at. We feel like we had to reinforce, you're going, we don't.
But no one had any other ideas of what else to do. You know, this was the only thing that we had and so. I didn't hear any.
Our council meetings, I think we need to go to the highway first, we need to do this, but this stuff just kept rolling on and.
So I'll go back to the.
And and things I I would disagree, but they had to get to a certain point in order for us to know, okay? And that's all, that's all that was needed.
When we got those figures.
And I'm gonna go back to the two point, you say six million dollar building. Brad said he built it for two million dollars down there. And that would have been plenty of enough space for EMA, the nine one one and the former office.
Two point seven million because we're gonna have to pay. That's pre-COVID and we're gonna have to tear down the jail. We didn't, we saved taxpayers out because.
Yes, so you gave the plan to the city.
It was two point five.
I mean, it's not, it's two point six.
Sixty nine to tear it down.
It was fifty nine thousand to tear it down. And Brad paid fifty eight thousand to tear it down.
And you pay for the.
So, you know, and then gave away the subsidy.
Okay, so.
Brad, I'm not blaming you for that.
I think we got a deal, we didn't get anything, we, that was what I cost us, eighty five thousand to tear it down.
And they'll give it to you.
I think we need to ask.
Okay, that's real quick. Fed money, fed uh fed rent or rent, they will take it, of course, is there any such thing? I do not know that.
Well, Barbara, now you've got a very historic building.
I just learned it was a big historical, and if you. And if you. If we got bad rent, is a bad rent money for a store to get in? Or?
The only thing, Jeff, I'm aware of is there's efficiency rent money available for mechanical renovations that enhance the efficiency of the building. There is rent money available.
You just got to be careful that they don't require a David's faith and wages you. Mine's 13%.
Right.
There's a couple of comments. Couple of comments. I don't have a TV at home. So I can't do Monday morning quarterbacking and looking back on everything that we should have done. That day's over with. And we've spent most of our meeting talking about what could have, should have, would have, might have under a certain set of circumstances that no longer exist in the world that we live in today. And so for me, I'm here to help solve problems and to come up with solutions. And I appreciate the work that the commissioners have done because we're all elected to take some initiatives. We're not to leave the things worse off than we found them. It's to make things better for our citizens than when we arrived in the seats that we sit in. So for me, it's not so much what could somebody should have done. It's like, okay, it's the end of the first quarter of the ballgame. Let's have a timeout. Can we reevaluate? Can we relook at things? Can we have some more discussions? Mix some more things into the soup? Throw more people into the process to keep this moving forward? Our population is declining. So whether we want to ask these citizens to assist us in coming up with some plans or paying something out of their pockets, they're going to many of because we're going to have less citizens five years from today than what we have today. So we're going to be in the same problem and we're not going to have the money. So I would just encourage you to help me. Can we talk about what can we talk about moving forward as next steps? And not spend all of our time blaming, pointing fingers, what could have, should have, would have done when a world, that world doesn't exist today? It's gone. It's over with. There'll be another set of circumstances coming up in the future, but not the ones from the past. So I just, I don't have the answers. But I'm ready to go into the second quarter of the game and see if we can all get our arms around some of the things that we may want to address and see if we can come up with some solutions. If we can't, we can't. But I think it's almost too early to say that my child is not smart enough to be in XYZ school, XYZ grade when they haven't fully developed all their thinking, all their plans yet. So that's, that's my frustration in the process. Can we be hopeful that we can come up, can we find a million dollars to do something? You know, for the county or is it all or nothing? I think we live in a world that we expect perfect solutions on day one. And we're not going to come up with a perfect solution, you know? 50% of the people are going to be happy, 50% are going to be sad, others are going to throw us under the bus. That's part of the process. We got involved, seek election to make a difference. And so I'm just ready to go to the second quarter and see if we can find some solutions and not say all the things that we can't do because of a world that no longer exists. Make that listen.
Did you follow up with that? My name is Michael Hunt, I live in Wallbush Township. Email everyone who counsels, you personally. My profession is a manufacturing engineer. I manage properties. I know what I'm talking about. You said what you said. First thing I do is I go out and get estimates, I get quotes from at least three different people. And then we bring it together collectively. We discuss the options and we make the best choice forward for the company. I'm just asking them to do the same. They make the best choice. We have let you make those choices. Listen to us, thank you.
Idea, okay? From teaching, you know, you learn that to run more now to do something else. Turn down a little corner, putting up a new courthouse out there.
You know, somebody said that to me. They said, instead of spending $14 million on the courthouse, why don't you just build a new one? It probably wouldn't cost you as much.
It's a tornado.
Yeah, it took it out.
Awesome to do that. I mean, we can, we can all confront tornadoes, we can.
Right. Right.
I think that the historical building and the bureaus and stuff is what people. Same church. And if there was a financial decision, maybe that's the smartest thing, but then it went financial and then you probably need a one out of each act, which would be more potential than what they are now.
I don't know how you guys feel, but I would like to know just out of curiosity, what it would cost to add on to the jail or to the 911 center?
Because we have funds that we've been paid for.
Exactly.
We have the sun.
Well, it could be his work, but. The 911 center.
And a court, a court that will ride after with, it's really all along.
And that would cut down the bottom of other places. That's why I think we need a bigger. It goes outside of law.
Well, we do have the space over there, you know. County has been approached. Just a thought, do we? Do we want to?
Yeah.
Then, well, I mean, I don't know what the council wants, how they want to.
I just want to say, I just want to say bye. I'll leave my card here with the auditor and just call me on his cell phone if any questions about anything or Taylor will take it. But 765, just call me anytime. Our goal, our goal was to provide you a menu of costs and options for the things we were assigned to. So hopefully, I know you guys, obviously, no one before with the annex, but at least you can do some information about all three projects related to FOSS to help you guys make further decisions as you guys move forward. So appreciate your time. We have nothing to do in solar this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's okay. We're going to take the mic. Okay?
What is? I'm good, thank you.
Nancy, she was, she's on my table.
Yes.
So maybe just tell me you don't have, you know, that.
So I don't know what trade is the agenda to solar penny or process is allowed to alternative vision.
I'm making a challenge.
Red? Yes, sir. Yeah. Brandon? Yeah, I can start here. So my name is Eric, I'm studying data management and software engineers. We were asked to prepare kind of a financial look at what impacts a solar project could be to the county, so also the community. So we've taken a look at the property tax act here. I shared the analysis with you guys, I know there's copies earlier, but on the table. And I'll kind of start, so there's two copies, they look very similar. One is for page one and one is for page two. You'll see that there on the subject line, developing solar project dash page four. So I'm going to start with that one. And I'm going to start on page two, kind of the analysis here. This is kind of just a summary of the entire, entire project. All the information we put together. So it has a big stoppage any time, having to go into anything and working on it. So, okay. Page one of the developing solar project is that the investment is about $645 million. That is a 450 megawatt. We're estimating that the best value from this project could be about $235.8 million. Again, this is page one. Of that, I wanted to note that about 35.8 million of that 235.8 is land value, has land estimates, so increases in land value due to the solar project, an increase in climate basement to a solar land basement. That portion of the investment is not payable. So that, no matter what payment is decided, if any, that cannot be availed, the land is. So during the proposed investments, we looked at a approximately 11-year timeframe. Without a property tax payment, the company will pay about $44.5 million. With a 10-year, 100% property tax payment, the company could pay about $9.7 million. That is about a $34.7 million savings. Now, what I want to touch on there is, and this kind of leads the rest of the analysis, is property taxes paid by a company or developer of whatever the project is, is not necessarily being used dollars for communities. I'm sure you're all aware of states, the state has set communities at an accident levy. So the county, schools, townships, etc. could only increase their levy so much each year, depending on all the state grants. The last year was around 4%. When that levy increases each year, so saying, this is how much you are able to generate through your property tax levy. A property tax rate is determined by looking at the assessed value of that community. So for example, for the county, looking at the assessed value, what the levy is, the state says you can have, and a tax rate is generated in order to create that. So the higher the assessed value of the community, the lower the tax rate and vice versa. Lower the assessed value or decline, the tax rate has to be higher to support that. So property taxes paid by a new company and a new investment, things like that, really go to all sets of property taxes and other members of the community to pay, whether that's farm, presidential companies, etc. With an abatement on a, on a project of this nature, there are terms of economic development payment typically that will be when an abatement is provided. An economic development payment is essentially, when, when these projects start popping up along with time of new income state, the payment was set up as a 10-year traditional tax abatement and an amount of megawatts based on however many megawatts a certain amount of megawatt roughly at the market at that time, that was provided to the counties to do what they wished to do. So that, when you hear economic development payment, that is new money available to the county. So that, when you hear economic development payment, that is new money available to the county. Not always the first council, but typically what we've heard is it's available for any new purpose. So with a ten-year, one hundred percent property tax payment, we have a formula that we use where we look at what would the savings be, what are the additional savings from a ten-year, one hundred percent, to a ten-year stair step declining, so one hundred ninety, eighty-seven, sixty-eight cents. Plus the amount per megawatt, so essentially saying, the additional savings that the company will be receiving because of the extra abatement incentive, or flowback in some form or fashion to the county with the economic development. Again, these are just estimates at the moment, nothing's been actually negotiated, or associated with the volume of numbers. And we're estimating that that could be about twenty-one point seven million dollars in economic development. This is for page one, that would be new money that the county could use. Again, sure, for whatever projects it chooses to do within its own case. I will note again, that's just our estimate, we have not been negotiating, the company is actually, in their initial kind of run of numbers, showing a thirteen million dollar payment over seven payments. This is just a number kind of came up with the rock calculations in conversation, so just wanted to note that as well. During the course of a property tax payment, there will still be property tax rate deductions holding all else constant. Because, again, that levy is not a payment, so even though you hear the term ten-year, one hundred percent, land is not available, so there still is assessed value that's flowing through to various home lot communities. There's four townships, four tax district townships that this is proposed to be located within Kentucky Landus. Thirty-seven percent within the Davis Township Tax District. Twenty-nine percent within the Logan Township Tax District. Four percent within the Richland Township Tax District. And about thirty-one percent in the Shawnee Township Tax District. Because of the additional land investment, the land increase assessed value, excuse me, you could see rate declines, for example, in the David Township, that could go down about thirteen cents. So from one point seven zero four nine to one point five seven two five. Logan Township down about another thirteen cents approximately. Richland Township Tax District about zero point zero one six two cents. And then Shawnee Township about zero point one one eight cents. Again, these are just holding all else constant, whether this new investment breaks the taxes.
So, let, let me understand. If I let Logan Township, which is basically the city of Attica, around the city of Attica, my, my property tax on a, and you broke it down, I might have jumped a little bit ahead, we've broken it down by the median, median home value, hundred point three thousand dollars. I would say fifty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents, which isn't a lot, but I would still say that during the taxing period, the tax payment period.
Yes.
So, every property taxpayer in those four townships, again, are going to see savings from day one.
Yes, holding all else constant, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So after the ten years, that same piece of property would be two hundred sixty-four dollars a year. That's by year, by year. So, and that's a hundred point four thousand dollar house. There's not a lot of hundred point four thousand dollar homes left, by the way they're selling this. So if that was a three hundred thousand dollar home, you're probably looking at over six hundred dollars. Even eight hundred dollars of tax savings to every, to anybody who falls under whatever their property.
Unless they live right next to four, with the property values.
Yeah, and that's ten years from now. Okay, I'm just pointing out to everybody that I'm taking people notice.
I, I like that question.
Yes, sir.
So, are you basing the savings, are you figuring in that, like, Attica next year is going to have a, we've heard anywhere from seventeen to thirty-four million dollar addition to their schools that's going to cause for taxes to go up? Is that figured into this?
No, this is looking at what is known today.
What, in a second, so they may not have any savings at all?
Sure, if you are right, so this, if that would happen.
Well, there's going to be some savings.
If we're, if we're looking at just those two things, that, that may raise the tax rates up and this could bring the tax rates down. So it would offset some or all of that increase. If you are right, other things happen, the tax rates, all issues from schools, it would affect that, so as that would increase, a project like this could go up to offset those decreases. And, and we did look at, in the analysis, I know you're all, we looked at a two hundred thousand dollar home, we can look at any type of home, any type of abatement options. Yeah, we, we, right, right, if we are, with those numbers you said were, were correct to start that maybe in value. We also look at Purley, go Farthing, and that township that you represent, and Logan Township is about twelve dollars for the device. After, of course, tax payment during about two dollars, I can see a sense of that. But I also will note that, just living in those tax districts, you're going to see the most benefit as a taxpayer in terms of all of that assessed value, portions of there located there. The further away you are from the investment, generally speaking, the less impact you feel in terms of property taxes going down. Because it all depends on if you're already located in that same school district, in that same township, in that same county. And so speaking of county, everyone within the county could see something small, because us in county, too, goes over across the town, across the schools, township, etc. So, yeah, that, that is really, that is page one of this project, so again, having to, the rest of the analysis goes through all of what is on this page and what I've kind of discussed in more detail, was a bit more different readers. If there are any questions, we have to, not, we will move on to page two. So the page two of the project is a approximately three hundred and thirty-seven and a half million dollar investment. So again, this is isolated from page one, so we look at these two pages completely separately.
I just have a really quick question before you start.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between page one and page two? What is page one and what is page two?
I would prefer that the company speaks to what is page one and two, but as far as the number perspective, it's really just a different, different, that's the analysis, where the project is located. As far as the properties.
Sorry, I have to speak to that, maybe a long will be next, so we're developing so. The, the project is a seven hundred megawatt project, similarly, it's not a project that can be built in one phase. The construction timeline will be twenty-four to thirty-six months. The first phase of the project would be four hundred fifty megawatts, if you do the piece first. Seemlessly, the completion of the first phase would be starting the second, which is a two hundred fifty megawatts, again, four hundred seven hundred megawatts. There is no unknown land pattern as to what the project footprint would match. Footprint is what is matched on that wall, has been, about a year and a half. But yes, with this sort of finance, that the totality of the project, seven hundred megawatts, that has not changed. The basic schedule is more for the financing, instruction, and the management of any sort of financial piece, if there were one. And I, I do want to recognize, we mature that on basis of your, your simply, your.
So does your footprints look like it might change for page two?
No, footprint is matching, footprint that's on the wall, that footprint would match.
Thank you.
Yes, page two, I guess we'll get a little harder on the page here, I do want to mention, I heard it mentioned earlier that the project could come with a property tax payment. I say, I can't answer that, I don't know the company's financial situation, or anything along those lines, but I would just say that if the project came with an abatement versus without, the difference there is, with an abatement, the county would be receiving some money in terms of that can be out of the water payment, that would be negotiated, kind of all discussed. Again, that is new money that's available to use, however the county chooses to do so. If without an abatement, if that same project would come of the same magnitude, so there would not be likely an economic development, because there will be no incentive to the company. So there would not be any new dollars to the county, outside of maybe some certain rate of changes, different things like that, but the majority would not be new money. The benefit would be that that, those rate reductions and assessed value, those would come on, because they would not be a big assessed value. Flow through sooner, property tax declines sooner, again, the flip side is that it would be likely to not be.
Okay, so economic development payments, if you went with an abatement versus no abatement, just paying straight property tax, they will be paid at the same time regardless, which will be upon up and running. So, economic development payment, when it's up and running, if we did an abatement. If we didn't do an abatement, property tax paid, when it's up and running.
It would, it would personal property, like on the solar, start.
It, it would start, but again, that's not necessarily new dollars, because just the string.
They would start right, so they have the taxes, but what we're writing.
Yes, yes, holding all else constant, yes, ma'am, that's a great point, that the majority of this investment is utility solar, personal property. So it is subject to a thirty percent floor of the investment, so however the company chooses to appreciate that for their tax purposes, as the law states currently in the state, it cannot go below a thirty percent floor. So that, those numbers are reference after a thirty percent floor. Again, it's more like that's going to be traded. So, so page two, again, I explained the impacts of page one, just let me get this along here. Three hundred thirty-seven and a half million dollar investment, two hundred fifty megawatts, as was mentioned. A hundred twenty-two and a half million dollars of new assessed value for this phase. About seventeen, under a little over eighteen million dollars of that land assessed value, so again, that cannot be a payment. And going throughout, I like some of the property tax data, so it's twenty-two point one million dollars, no abatement. Four point seven within the abatement over an eleven-year time period. Savings of seventeen point, just something, seventeen point one million dollars, and our illustrated the power of all payments, eleven point two million dollars. So again, new money, so eleven point two plus the number I referenced on previous, twenty-one point, just like seventy million dollars would be new money. Again, those amounts are subject to change, that's just what we've illustrated for our, for our purposes, basically, we see, say, the, uh, company on this project is, in their initial numbers, showing a three point two five five million dollar payment over seven payments. I just wanted to go to that.
Who pays them if they're not directly paying?
That is from the, would be from the company to the county. Again, I would prefer the, the company for that, I just do the financial advisor, every representative.
And then, our preliminary power mapping shows that most of this power is used in Indiana, is all completely. Electrons are not like water, electrons go to where they're needed, that's what they have the most impact. Down the water pipe, should at one point, is another, story. But again, our preliminary power mapping shows the tolerance of this electricity being absorbed and utilized in the city.
Probably good enough.
Well, it's, it's certainly, it's a great dance place, I, I would say South Bend, for example, recently announced eight hundred megawatt, eight hundred megawatt gas. This is larger users, for your campus, about eight hundred megawatt user, I believe. So there's lots of large units around the state of Indiana.
My name, my name is Rick Paul, I'm an attorney in parks, former, I represent the county on the solar projects. And helps to, with the prior project that had been approved earlier. So, if, you know, the echo was, Greg said, it is really a decision on the abatement, whether you want cash, or you just want the property. And if you elect to have the cash and then have development payments, then the county would enter into an agreement with the solar company, where we would protect your benefit department. We would have a minimum assessed value in that agreement, if it fell below the minimum assessed value, they'd have to make a makeup payment. If there was a change in law, I always get nervous, at some point, you know, this would be the tax at the state level, who knows over the course of the life of the solar project, then they would have an obligation to make a payment as if they, they were paying the taxes on the current system. So, we, we can protect the county, I, I, like I said from the outset, it's, it's a policy decision, if you want cash, you do projects, or you want have more investment to do, more cash, and hopefully, we will do our best to make sure you get done with the property.
Thanks, Rick, and yeah, you know, just definitely, the same, same kind of benefits here, you know, like shown page two, that's the first one. This is located, a ten percent Logan Township Tax District, ninety percent Shawnee Township Tax District. Just speaking quickly here, I'll hit on the median home value, so in Logan Township, thirty dollars and eleven cents, go in the course of the abatement. A hundred sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents after the course of the abatement. So again, just, you know, hit on those real quickly, but, and, and just to compare to the prior solar project that Rick mentioned, just to compare the size of the projects, that project was, at the time, a hundred and seventy-five million dollar investment, two hundred megawatts. So again, we're talking page one, six hundred forty-five million, three hundred and thirty-seven and a half million, with four hundred fifty, two hundred fifty megawatts. The prior project was about seventy-five, a little over seventy-five million dollars, estimated assessed value. This project's two hundred thirty-five point eight and a hundred twenty-two point five for respective phases. And lastly, there was an abatement rated on that project. That payment was seven point one million dollars, economic development payments, four point five. Actually, it was, it's bad.
What's the life expectancy of a solar plant?
Yeah, technology is constantly advancing, the panels that we're spending right now are made by Canadian solar. It's, it's made in just a simple, the panel will be assembled in Texas, brought up here. For not only that, panels last about twenty years or so, give or take, weather permitting, of course, could be hailed in if you're doing something else in Kansas. It's like your bar or your cups, a suit, being placed in the mix. That being the case, that first twenty years is exhausted, those panels might need to be repaired. But predominantly, then, those panels, once received, they're back, twenty-two percent efficiency give or take, and, and life span is seventeen years or so, I use. But the project is a twenty-year, about four renewable, five-year positions on the loose.
Now, how are they compared to the windmills, when their life expectancy is done, there's nothing they can do with them, except bury them.
Well, I don't mind, I'm not here talking about windmills, because I'm not versed in, but from a, from a panel point, new panels at this point, I believe, are about ninety percent recyclable. There's a great document that I have to provide to you. Panels are considered an E waste, just like a cell phone or anything else, you're going to recycle, salvage the, the metals and everything that are in the panel. Yet, there's another trash, that would just be gone landfill, but I believe this number's ninety percent recyclable on a panel. Are you responsible for the cleanup at the end of the contract?
Cleanup, you mean decommissioning?
Yeah, I mean total cleanup, I mean total decommissioning, but totally, totally restoring the ground where it was.
Yes, the, our contracts are signed with each land, have a decommission statement in there, as well as a statement regarding restoring the site to have more better condition, so landing contract. We have indicated about two years now that we will voluntarily end the decommission agreement. That's not something that can require, a county that does not have it, will let its economic development process to, to collect that, to document how development, in this case, we're just somebody who's volunteered. There'll be a bond posted for the decommissioning, probably will be announced again, the recyclable value of the panels, certainly, we don't, we will come in here and say the base is zero. Because in those first couple of years, the chances of the project needing to be shut down, pretty nil. But there, there, the south, the county does have a way to cost project, it is, sorry, again, works on decommissioning, as well as site restoration.
And what happened, did you go bankrupt?
Well, if, if we went bankrupt, well, for starters, I guess this shows the fact, Phoenix is a early-stage developer, we are a site selector developer of, of these types of assets. We are not going to be the owner-operator, there will be a separate entity that is a, a second group that is designed and built to operate these, these types of assets. The question, if they were to go bankrupt, well, that, there's litigation in the contracts, need to stay in place, litigation, take care of that. And then certainly be a decommissioning agreement, everything else, if nothing else works out, a decommission bond would be there to, to move panels and restore. But to answer your, my second question, what if, if our company goes bankrupt, we will not be as part of the project.
So you're going to sell somebody else?
Yes, we've been very good at that, since day one, yes, our, we are in early stages, so our specialty is site selection, our specialty is economic development agreements, our specialty is permit. For example, I've been a Indiana resident for forty years, and I'm a twenty-five, so I'm very well versed in Indiana, deals, permitting, that's rights. The fact that we have a, really, we have a patient, we have them on file since fifty-four. So we're working through that right now, with the cabinet, to obtain a permit, and then move forward with product, with or without.
So paying anybody that wants to buy, including the Chinese?
No, pay buyer, it would have to be, sometimes we select these all the same.
That being the Chinese?
I, I, this is the, I don't, you're.
No, no, I mean CCP, Chinese, not this part.
It depends on the standards of all the federal regulations, regulations, we are, that's something we want to consider. I'm not certain that's going to need any sort of standard.
So it's possible that, yeah.
I, I'm not here to answer, I have other questions, I don't, I don't know how that would relate to the project. Uh, with the state laws, I think that they're coming in place, possibly they're going to restrict land ownership to certain parties, certain groups that are identified by the state law.
That hasn't happened.
That hasn't happened, we haven't, let's hypothetically talk about that. Um, the, uh, you know, that happens, you know, the land positions that are, are points of interconnections, those will need to be owned by somebody who would can be on a list, or some sort of check, mark, do this, and that. So there's, there's some checks and balances here, in the, in the future, it sounds like, for now, uh, to, uh, to maybe answer the question, that's the difference.
So, would you repeat, please, so everybody in the room here, you guys are coming with or without the tax payment?
Correct, the project, the project is moving forward regardless of how the county desires to leverage the economics of the project, the, the economics of the project. The preliminary, uh, development, uh, resolution that the county had in front of the last two, um, is a creature of Indiana law. It is required by the state to utilize the works that are found in Indiana law, for the county, for their councils to adopt that type of vehicle, to facilitate that type of activity, it is not Gen X's words, um, and the economic process is, in its very essence, is designed to answer one question, how does the county want to leverage the tax? That is, our company simply was, we withdrew it, as I recognize that from my saying, uh, looking to provide that vehicle, so the county could go through that. So we filed that today on February the ninth, hadn't heard anything about it, we withdrew. So again, that's, I, we're just here to answer questions about the project, but certainly, that is not on the table, because we withdrew it, that if the county would like that to be filed, we consider it, we send a report, and those are all conversations that we have on the table.
Who signs the contract between Gen X and the county on making sure everything's covered, like decommissioning, road usage? Who, who signs that contract?
I'll, I'll title sign the contract, I review all these sections that you mentioned. So the road use plan will have to be submitted, has to meet the requirements of the county, which are protect our roads, you know? We're, we're extending to them the same courtesy we extended to the company before them. Uh, we request a video of the road before they come in, a video of the road after they finish, and any impact that they cause, on or with, you know, whatever the impact is that they caused, then that has to be repaired by them, or has to be bonded to protect the county. On the decommissioning part, the same thing applies, from the decommissioning part, um, they look at their salvage value, and their salvage value, when they presented it, is higher than the decommissioning value. Therefore, there was not much of a requirement, because salvage value is higher, to provide a bond for decommissioning. I did not feel that that was protected to the county, I came to the commissioner then, I said to him, I don't like this, he said, go to Richard Paul, he's the guy you need to talk to. Good to meet you, Mr. Paul, I've never met you before, I sent him an email, and I said, that decommissioning plan is not going to fly, at least in my perspective, it's not protected to the county, because the salvage value is higher than the decommissioning value. So anytime, in my simple mind, somebody can walk away and say, perhaps, Paul, you take care of it, that wasn't going to happen. So, Richard responded back, I agree, that's not protected, we're going to work on it, we're working with their lawyers, to include a bond, a corated bond, at any time, that if somebody goes bankrupt, or they walk away, the county is protected to do the decommission. So that's what we are on though, so when I think that those are sufficient, and they meet the requirement that is protected to the county, then I will continue with my review, until then, you know, they, now it's between Richard and their lawyer, they're figuring out how to take the county from a decommissioning perspective. The road use plan, I worked with Jason on it, we'll take care of it, that's no problem, we'll, we'll make sure that, I'll review that.
And why I ask about the road use?
Sorry?
On the road use, does, I looked at the, the Dolphin, uh, or not Dolphin, uh, Ranger Power, and the way I read it, if they don't agree with fixing the roads the way we feel, we have, the county taxpayers have to pay fifty percent of all legal action.
That's beyond my favor, the legality has to go to the, to the county lawyers.
Well, that's what I'm getting to, who signed that contract? Who signs that contract?
I assume something legislative body.
Yeah, so the commissioners signed all the contracts, legislative body, like they've signed any other contract, uh, county. Um, sometimes if there's tax baiting, then involve the, uh, the company, well, that's, that's in the council, sign the economic development agreement, that provides for that abatement and the economic development payments, but otherwise, they're, I mean, uh, county, the county commissioners on behalf of the county, yeah, and the company. Personally, with respect to the road use agreement, I have not looked at the Ranger Power road use agreement in a long time, and we, Roger and I did work together on that, to get that agreement finalized. I suspect what it says in that agreement, is if there's a dispute about whether the roads have been adequately, um, prepared, and it's determined that we were wrong, that they aren't, um, adequately repaired, that we didn't have to pay, have to, issue. If we are right, and that, um, the roads were not sufficient, then they would have to pay us, and they would pay a hundred percent. Basically, that was the amount, but honestly, I, I haven't looked at it.
I believe that was a misheard.
Yes.
Now, a third thing I just want to let you guys know, and you must know, is I've been throwing a loop that I have no business being in, which are the private homeowners and our neighbors. They started copying me on emails between them and Dolphin about agreements that they are negotiating themselves. One of them was a winery, or a venue, or something, you know, something about, you know, renting the place and all that. What I tell the neighbors, please, this is none of my business, it's a, it's a discussion between you and that company, what you agree to is between the two of you, I just want to be copied on the agreement, so I don't approve something that is contrary to what you guys approve, uh, agreed to. That's on the, that's on that. So, I've had two neighbors now who wrote me in, and I'm more than happy to protect these neighbors, but I have to do it within the terms of, I have nothing to do with it, I have talked in, uh, the online as well, and I told them, if you guys negotiate, I have no say in this, what is done, at least some of the innovations, negotiations are, so I don't approve something that would be harmful to the earth.
So with, uh, with, with, with respect to the decommission, these are all really good questions. You know, we have an agreement with Ranger Power on decommissioning, that provides for securing them, we would want the same from Gen X, if this was for them. So that's not been finalized, but that agreement, uh, is. We would secure that decommissioning obligation with a third party, uh, on the amount against the negotiation. One, there is usually, they get a new capital, insurance under that Ranger Power salvage value of the, of materials, is driving down the decommission laws, but a key, a key part of that is those panels cannot be subject to any lien or other security. So often, these are vendor finance, they're part of large finance projects, so they, and they're lending, they're lending. So that doesn't do us any good in, in the issue of situations, so they end up having it most of the time, because, because of that. The reason we get this separate agreement, is, is you mentioned, he, each landlord, he has under their lease typically, uh, a decommissioning obligation, but the thought is that, over and above the individual landowners in the project area, the county is a whole, which brings a lot of people out here that don't have, you know, leases, the county is a whole, and the, the commission consists of, of electricity. So that's why we get a separate, uh, agreement from the county that can be enforced, regardless of what landowners, so.
So what you said, this hasn't been finalized, so that means this whole deal with Dolphin.
Well, they, they submitted a decommissioning plan, but I don't believe it's been finished.
But, I, I, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, that, I'm not talking about decommissioning, I'm talking about the whole project. It hasn't been finalized, so it can be checked. On the county level?
Well, they, they can, they can comment more, but there's, there's, the way to look at this, there's, there's two sets of processes here. The main, uh, rules governing their ability to build a solar project in your county are under your zoning and planning, uh, rules. And the county, and I know many disagree with this choice now, but the county, in its own, can provide for solar law. So it has certain conditions, and have to be made, on that, if they don't have a, a solar project. Including in that, is the road use agreement that I've been talking about, we're not sure that it is expressed in the decommission agreement, or.
Voluntarily, right.
But, um, often that is submitted as part of their planning processes. What we're discussing tonight, is their request, they receive tax payment on the project, so there's no requirement over here of planning this all. If they have the tax abatement of approval from the council, now that they have the road uses and decommission.
Same, is that what's going to be required?
Then, I don't think that's been determined, they, they apply, and then will continue through the process, and it will go through that process, independent of what happens on the tax payment decision. And what I hear them saying is, if you grant us an abatement, and you want to leverage that abatement and some cash upfront, then we're willing to talk about that. If you don't, then we're just going to keep going on the planning process and do our present.
Got a, got a question going back to the revolution that you withdrew. Um, you took four townships, in northern part of county, and you included the entire township, and that, why did you need the entire township? And not just the areas where you're going to do it?
Well, I mean, yes, you can see Dolphin is, is, runs that, those four townships out of the map. Uh, the, in our interest in providing the, the county a place to start that conversation, is illustrate that area where there could be infrastructure, underground lines, the connection points to the grid, any number, many number of those places, that map, yes. It was larger than the footprint, the, the county, through a conversation and, and negotiation, could have provided a map, would reduce that area down to the boundaries of the project, that would have certainly been fine. Uh, but that, the conversation never got to that point, so we, the map that we started, it was, was a starting.
If, if I may, sure, right, right, that is, um, council, uh, then to revolve more, uh, Dolphin. So, the ERA area that you, you just articulated, that's an enabling map, so all that's saying is, anything within this geographic fence could be abated if Dolphin places infrastructure on that site. If there is a site, a parcel within that area, see someone saying, well, why is my, why is my piece of land on there, I didn't, I didn't read any of this. Nothing about Dolphin affects anyone who doesn't have Dolphin infrastructure on their property. And it also doesn't enable that homeowner, or that property owner, to obtain abatement for some other improvement that they make on their property. The only things that are available on that map are the parcels within that area that have Dolphin, uh, investment on them. If the council, uh, at a later date, wanted to, um, shrink the map, to tailor it to what actually is there, I don't think my client would be, um, against that, this would just, again, a starting point to say, we don't want to, uh, change the story later on and say, we need more. We thought that it was more transparent to say, this is what the universe could be, to start off with, and we're willing to shrink it down, um, as the project.
That's all, but it is, as a private citizen, a homeowner in that area, I, I was reading that, you're saying my property is, is an area being deemed undesirable? Well, that fulfills my property, my property acts as a substantial product, those two are in very conflict.
Yeah, I don't believe that, um, I don't believe that assessments are actually whether a piece of property is within an economic revitalization area. Economic revitalization area is part of the statutory piece of Indiana law, that regulates whether a, uh, property can have an abatement on it. And the language it was used in the resolution is borrowed and directly quoted from Indiana statute. So in order to, in order to achieve a legal abatement, you, uh, you use your mirror language in the state statute, so there's no question later on, as to whether that property actually qualified as planned, uh, that could be abated or could be, uh, so it's, it is a procedural, uh, step, it is not a judgmental step, or, it's not a narrative on, um, any property specifically in that area, it is simply utilizing Indiana state code, uh, to articulate what is required for a property to be legally, uh, within a bank, out of revitalization.
So there's nothing in that code then, that would allow the state or some other organization to come in, at a later time, wanting, you know, that might launch a certain section, of the community and say, okay, this is already pending this, now this property has less value, and we can take it and present it to any of the Dalton.
Yeah, I, I won't answer that, I'm, I'm just saying, I think that there's two.
Well, I think we talked about two, 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 we don't have that exactly in that scenario, I'll, I'll let someone speak to that.
The designation of the ERA will affect the, now, people can debate whether, what impact the, you know, solar mountain sound on your, on your property, if it's nearby, and, all kinds of information on both sides on the internet, and, but in terms of the abatement designation, it's not going to affect you.
The ERA will?
It won't, it just won't, I mean, it's, there's nothing that's, uh, this is saying that, it has nothing to do with your, your home, or your, your farm, uh, when they make this estimation.
Or in passing.
They're doing it because it's a, it's a, it's needed under the statute in order to, uh, provide payment, and I know it sounds counterintuitive, there's some language in there, it's not the most pleasant language, but, um, the courts have upheld, and it's also challenged, where they just, you could do it, you know, in a rural agricultural community, and the courts have said that's okay, there's, it means statute, but it, it's not a judgment on the character of the property. It's an targeted area, you know.
So if I decide, or if my partner says I need to relocate, I need to sell my home, it's not going to negatively impact the property by, because, a resolution with a pass, saying that it's in this area.
So, right, right.
No, no, no bank will ask you for that, in terms of, like, the buyer's lender, or.
This town has six hundred and thirty-five mill, windmills in it, since two thousand eight, since they've been there, they will send you information from their assessor or audit office, uh, years it's been there, and they have shown, and I might say every year, that they have shown that they've kept up neighboring counties with their house. Now, you can see them for a while, and people hate it.
See, the reason I'm passionate about this, was I bought a piece of property, and had it, not knowing that it was in the RMC determination. He wants to afford that.
All sorts.
I cannot sell that property, I'm bankrupt, and, and. And so, I want to make sure that I'm not getting into similar situations, that has no benefit to me and my family, but extremely detrimental.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can tell you mine's here, you thought the thing, I'm telling you the same, it's why they're thinking of to have the unfortunate building issue, because I'm the starter. How, how much of the project is, is, how much of the map? How much of the project is, is, how much of the map includes obvious areas? Is it a lot?
The day's conclusion.
I agree, but ERA, that's a motion, it doesn't affect.
But what about, what about?
Solar panels next to it, that's what they did. That's true definition.
Right, I have a question. Who, at what level in this state decided that solar panels is agriculture? I just want to know the mindset, or anybody else's opinion.
Well, it's under zoning, it's whether it's solar, it's a local issue, whether it's solar, under zoning, or whether it's a local question.
So I have another question.
What was the first?
I couldn't hear your question more. What the question was, at what level of government decided that solar panels is considered agriculture? And they stated that that is a zoning issue at the local level, am I correct? Okay, so my next question is, if a permit is not issued to any solar company from the county, can they still come in?
They have to have a permit that can, that could challenge, and I don't know the grounds and circumstance or how you're zoning or the trees. But they could challenge if they were properly denied. But they have to have a permit. A permit that approved yet. It's in process. It's on the land use side. They haven't applied for it yet, but on the land use side, they're working through that process for the moment.
You're trying to tell us all, how can that work?
I represent you on the, on the decommissioning agreement, the road use agreement, and in terms of the economic development, I'm not a planning its own lawyer. That's right. And your plan commission is.
As of today, not been permitted issue for long solar. They, they provided all the technical requirements, since we had given a bunch of comments back. And they went through the comments, provided me a revised version of those comments. One of them was the decommissioning plan. After talking to them, sending it to Rick, it's kind of awesome things until we figure out what we'll do with the decommission. Everything else is in the process of review. If it meets our requirements, or if it meets what we have as a standard, then we'll go with it. If it doesn't, then it's going to go back to them and really have to redo it. At some point, you have to understand, my hands are tied by our rules. If they end up needing everything that we request from them, I cannot say no, I can't give you a permit. It's, it's unhappy for me to do that, and I don't know what the reality, you know. But if they meet everything we're asking, then I have to issue a permit to them. Today, there is no issue, there is no permit that has been issued. So going through the technical reviews, I wanted to see easements or wherever the lines are going, any transitional limits, anything that has a footprint for the solar company. It's either going to be a derivative with the county, which the county who's giving them access to the right way. Or they can have to provide an easement, but they're going through somebody's farm that has not signed on with. So if they're going from my farm to Jeff's farm, and Jim is in the middle, they cannot go through Jim's without me having a recorded easement, and that's what I've been asking for all that stuff. Once they provide all of that, then I cannot reject that permit. They met all our requirements. When I buy the ordinance, which ends up, my hands.
So when you say that you have to apply for the ordinance, it's the ordinance, you're talking about the ordinance that's in place at the time of the platform, not retroactive to changing the ordinance and changing the.
By the platform, that they're existing ordinance. If the ordinance changed, then you're talking lawyer, top, and engineer, how would they exist in ordinance?
I just hope that's just to clarify, you're going against the ordinance.
Now, everything that Dalton submitted that was not required by the ordinance becomes part of the submitted, so I have to provide comments to go. And that's where I, I have, I have stacked this up, and I think we'll, we'll make sure everything is there. I asked for digital files, check setbacks, because that's the big thing for neighbors, to make sure their setbacks are correct. Off the road, there were three or four non-lying ones I sent it back to them. I'm sure they fixed them. Because they sent me back another digital file that I've not looked at. So I will go through that entire process. I want everybody to understand that I follow your rules. Once they're met, there's nothing I can do.
Okay, so I've got a legal question. If the permit has not been applied or approved, and, but the ordinance is changed, they don't fall under the changed ordinance? Is that correct? Because they've already applied.
So the commission city and our ordinance is so weak, it's allowed these solar companies to come in. And target that county. We should have, it should not be an unelected, unelected person making the permitting decisions. It should go to the planning commission and then suggestion to the commissioners. That's where it leaves the line. The commissioners have their ass to hop seat, and it should take the heat. That's where it should reside, the final decision. Or ordinance doesn't do that. It leaves it in one bureaucratic, bureaucratic decision, right there.
So my follow-up. If the planning commission tomorrow would vote on a moratorium recommendation to the commissioners. If the commissioners approve a moratorium, does that stop the permit from being approved?
I have no idea. Just, honestly, I don't. I assume that future will stand on, no one stands on it. I don't know what happens to existing.
But if we have a moratorium, how can that permit be approved?
And if the lawyers say cease, resist, please stop, I mean, I, I need the lawyer to talk again.
My question.
Well, that's what my question is to Professor Hall. It's if, if there's a moratorium and the permit has not been approved, does that stop?
Yeah, I think it's an open legal question. They should be able to continue with the, the permitting process. My experience has been with it has occurred, but basically comes along. It's a practical one. Now, what they would choose to do is, is up to them. I can't tell you that would be enforceable, but that would stop them.
So he's asked a question. Even if the zoning board recommended that tomorrow, which we don't want them to look, then it still has to go to the commissioners' speed to prove. My understanding is it's too active. So we don't even have three to vote on it now. And Brenda hasn't voted on anything solar, because she's above too much, so then we, one. So she's going to now because. I want to, I want that, since you know how it's going to be in. I'm just saying, remember, I left the meeting, because of the conflict. I have, what would I have been doing? And I may come out and say, one commissioner.
And it'll be at least 10 days, because I have noticed it. Sent out to the Springfield people to fill the vacancy.
Seems like a big problem.
Absolutely is.
Two members, the planning commission, have given a direct, indirect financial interest in solar that are going to be voting.
Well, the council, we only have one representative, and that's Jim McKee. Planting commission.
Talking about planning commission.
Right. And we don't have anything to do with the planning commission.
I have to, because there's not two members on that board that has a direct financial interest in solar.
And I can answer that, but maybe the commissioner.
The answer is yes.
And what they have saying, I'm not on this.
And it's only a five-member board.
They're staying in those.
I mean, five, six, there's more on it than nine total. Nine total, so it's.
You still have four members of the two of the state.
So we've got the unelecteds making up the rules. The first is not even from this county, but making all these decisions. Two, I want to want financial interests in solar. There's just a lot of.
And it's an advisory board, so they, when they make a, I, I know, I know what you're saying. But I want everybody to understand that they are an advisory board, so they present their decision, what they think the commissioners should do, to the commissioners, and it's up to them to take that advisement or.
Second question. So on the planning commission, isn't it a violation of Indiana, I think it's Article 2, Section 9? That you can't have two lucrative positions?
Two, right.
You know that?
Two lucrative.
Well, does that board pay?
Yes, you said Article 9.
It's Article 2, Section 9, or Article 9, Section 2, specifically statements.
The commissioner and a council have to be appointed to that. So is that what you're saying, the conflict is, that it's lucrative or?
Yeah, I mean, you can't have two lucrative positions within a county government.
They can't be paid for positions. Yep, you can't be paid for both positions.
Exactly, so.
So.
You got the commissioner back there that's on the board. That can't be him.
That happened to a gentleman that is a police officer in Frankfurt, Indiana. And he was on the town board. He got elected, he moved out of the town, they still let him remain on the board. He got elected for the council, or vice versa. And he had to relinquish his post for the city of Frankfurt, because he cannot be paid by vote positions.
So now, taking that, you could say, all these votes, not two of these votes. What does that make of them? Because you've got two people on there that shouldn't be voting. Another member signing this calendar.
So that's something that would have happened. I don't have to report, because it's, it's an appointed board and not an elected board. So I'm not sure if that rule applies or not, but that's definitely a legal question.
I think it used to be that the advisory was paid per diem because it was mileage. But I think that changed to now it was immediate, so that may have caused some.
But it would pay on the all wars, the PDA board, the assessor, we got the sheriff's mayor board.
Which, that's why I resigned.
Kell board, and I don't even know who's on that. So, you know, a lot of legal questions that I think was, if it was illegal, then maybe it would have challenged a long time ago. The decision would come down.
In the statute, that it has to be a commissioner and an advisor on the area of land commission?
Can I, can I read the law, please? Article 2, Section 9 of the Indiana Constitution prohibits government officials from holding two lucrative offices at the same time. Forgive, this law prohibits elected or appointed officials, blah, blah, blah. A person holding a lucrative office to accept a second lucrative office automatically forfeits the first office. I just heard you.
Hold on, this involves two elected positions.
Yeah, yeah, you're going to do my.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. It's two elected positions where you're making money. Like, I could, I could be a Brenda commissioner, council.
It's a lucrative office.
You got, so, hold on, hold on.
That's like the attorney's.
You don't get paid, do you?
Well, our attorneys come, but all this, okay. You can't do that. That's the law specifically prohibits.
But they don't.
We can't have a, we now have a county engineer that gets appointed to a county surveyor, who gets appointed to a planning or a ordinance administrator.
No, that's not, that's not the way.
It's appointed. The law says appointed. It works.
It's not a contract.
That's a contract.
It's, it's appointed. He was appointed these jobs. You can't have all these jobs. Okay, it's just not legal.
He's appointed.
It's, it's, he was appointed a job.
So it has a position. I am contracted. I have no.
He just, you have to find lucrative office. You can, you can look it up, and I can't give you a definition off the top of my head. But the statute also has, as many people have said so far, if you've read it enough. The statute also says, you know, like Paulie said, that the commissioners have somebody on that panel, and the council has somebody on that.
And it's getting paid.
So, I mean, if you take, if you take it up a lot, and you're, you're mad at the legislature for raising that, which again, I don't. Yes, I believe that's my.
Like, working is all you want. That's just the law. It's a serious, it's a, you can hold two lucrative positions.
Define, define lucrative position.
It, it says it in there. The only thing that even turned out to be, read all per diem, is if you read it, it gives you the answer. You just read it. I serve on the solid waste board in the county, and the commissioners serve on it. Mayor Mattick serves on it. Tom serves on it. Maybe you're not mayor anymore.
Can I ask a silly question, actually, Greg? I thought, I've been to a lot of these meetings, of course, I've been up before, we've actually been there tonight. Didn't we already, I feel like we're talking circus. Didn't we already vote the moratorium? Jim, you've been promised the last city council meeting, you guys all put a stop to this.
Just vague mess for a year.
The county council denied the ERA resolution.
Correct.
Resolution. It was 6-0 with one abstention.
Correct.
And then it was a 7-0 vote that we would not accept any ERA resolutions for tax abatement applications for one year.
Correct, but wasn't there a moratorium as well on any new projects or needs?
That's not, the council can't do that. That's, that's the issue.
The planning commission, that, that's the question.
Yeah, planning commission, they make a recommendation to the commissioners. But commissioners have the final say on the issue.
So, in terms of, oh. Again, again, wait a moment, next, we're happy, thank you for having us. Again, we're here to answer questions related to the project. Certainly, I wasn't prepared to speak tonight about our best rights status related to our permit. But I do wish that you all tomorrow certainly approached that topic with Ken, and that is your, is your attorney that represents the county. I'm not an attorney. Don't play one on TV. I'm not here to give legal advice, never have. But I will say that the best rights statute of 1999, Penitentiary Prophets versus Metropolitan Development Commission, is the root where the entity like Dalton Solar would rely on the symbol of our permit and the management of the conversation related to, does a new zone of ordinance change the trajectory of the permit that was filed on October 4th, 2023? Certainly, if that was Ken and Ask Mar Night, we appreciate that. But I believe this question was even answered on February 29th at the Attica High School during an open house with the solar. I believe it was Jessica Anderson from one of the groups, I don't know which one. I've spoken to how Dalton Solar was moving forward, and it changes the ordinance for an impact. Our project exceeds the standards that are in the current ordinance. We pride ourselves on that. Certainly, those standards are some of the standards that we've been utilizing to make alterations superlative. Again, we're happy to be here, answer questions, and we can now actually withdraw of our filing for the abatement. Certainly, you're welcome to discuss it, but again, it's on file, it's ours, it's this office. Once the manager, that's your management, but again, we will do that on May 2nd. Again, happy to be here, thank you.
So. If the numbers were correct, and the, the figures that Craig just gave us, makers telling, and they were dead on on Ranger, on the economic development, you're looking at just in Dalton. You're looking at just involved thirty million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We could spend. To pay for these projects. You add Ranger Power, seven point eight on there, we're talking forty million dollars. This county never had opportunity to get council. I know people don't like solar, I did. As elected officials, we were trying to find a way to get these projects done that we knew we had to get done without raising tax dollars. This is the answer.
Can I ask you a question? When you decided as the commissioners as to whether or not wind energy was going to come into the county, did you listen to the residents?
We did at that time, yes.
And you decided not to do it at that time? Based off of the decision of what, or based off of what the feedback was?
Thirty people in the planning commission back then, when we were developing it. They said they didn't like winds, we made it incredibly difficult, the planning commission made it incredibly difficult. Past the same group, they wanted to bounce over.
I got the question, but you want, sorry, Tina. But you guys, you've heard everybody talk from the community. And they've expressed that they don't want solar. And you've done it for one renewable energy after listening to thirty citizens, but you won't do it for another renewable energy when you've had hundreds of people.
We're not, we're going through that process. We're not staying there.
At least.
I guess I just, I just don't justify the logic.
It's worth naming a half energy for this, so.
This is your most important.
Well, from here on out.
You're on the street.
Well, no, I mean, these, these counties by all are in. So from here on out. The, 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 the people said.
I did, I also.
No, we don't have any. The attorneys, the, yeah, this is the attorney.
This, this is not.
There's no permit, that's why.
There's no permit.
So we have landowners that wanted wind, or wanted solar. But we have, we've had landowners that would like to have any change.
Well, I don't have a problem with the wind, I'd like the solar.
You can't take layers of research.
There are a lot of them, we really appreciate.
We have fourteen and a half pages of, on that ordinance on wind, and we have three pages on the ordinance on solar.
You know what, all we did as a planning commission back then was try to do the best we could. And give landowners rights, because we really took the rights away with the wind. And that's what we tried to do, I'm not going to apologize for it. Um, it is what it is. There we go. Indiana doesn't have a recall. We get to take care of this right now.
No recall in Indiana?
But we would have separated.
What I'd like to know is, Mr. Boone County put the two-year moratorium. Did it put a stop to anybody that had a plan for the land, do you know that?
I don't know.
That's something we need to find out.
I would just say, I would say traditionally, and I don't have the facts of that specific situation firmly, but traditionally in Indiana law, whatever the rules are, at the time, something is applied. Our rules, but that person, it follows through. Uh, so in this scenario, like you were discussing about the moratorium, would it stop future ones? Pretty, pretty clearly, I think that would be the case. Um, would it stop the one that was following the rules that were in place when it made the application? I would say traditionally, the courts have said, whatever the rules were when they applied, the rules that they had to meet. And throwing new rules, um, in front of somebody is, um, is not something that is traditionally allowed. But more research could be done to look into that, but I would say that's probably a safe default position.
But then you say, then you say, well, even though we have this land, solar land, that you can bury that. We don't have to have. Some type of information, you said, well, good. It may not be all the land that you have purchased, or at least.
Oh, no, I think you're getting at, um, for example, leases, I mean, our leases are part of our application. So the public can look at those leases here in the courthouse, we don't file, it's not a real war. Um, I think it's been represented, there's landowners in this county that are, might be a client of Dalton Solar. But their land is not up here on that map because it's not hard in front of us. But is that what you're getting at, there's other land that Dalton Solar does have under lease, but it's not on that map?
So how much land are we?
How much land did we lease?
How much did we?
I don't know. On. Well, there's forty-five hundred acres in blue, the lease, the, the fenced area is about sixty-six hundred acres. So in order to be fenced, it would be leased, so you're looking at about forty-five hundred acres actually under there.
And that will vary over time, how you look at it.
Well, certainly, one could assume that over time, as panels become more efficient. And let's say that first twenty-year lease ends. And the, the party that owns the project chooses to renew a five-year increment of lease. And they simply want to modernize the already seventeen to twenty-year-old panels, as mentioned earlier, maybe becoming obsolete. And now the panels that are available are of a higher, um, efficiency. So in theory, someone, in order to generate seven hundred megawatts, you wouldn't be using forty-five hundred acres of panels, uh, twenty-two percent efficiency. You would get, you would need a thirty percent panel, and a less acre. So yes, in theory, a future operator could shrink the footprint, but that's, that's, that's a possibility, sure. Is that your question?
Of course.
Right, right.
Including all the setbacks, it's over six thousand acres.
Correct, sixty-six, I think, sixty-six.
I just couldn't watch, because you can't hear it.
Yes.
So tomorrow is the area planning commission. So they can do a moratorium. They can recommend that for the next commissioner, okay. Brenda, I talked to you, and you said you would find a moratorium, correct, yes or no?
Of, of the, before election.
And you feel like people don't ask you questions?
Talk, they, before election, I said I could, I could possibly.
You said, okay, a moratorium.
They got a set one person.
I think it's that much, so there goes, you can do six months moratorium, you can do one year, it's whatever we want to say. I did say more to me, you should. Do you feel like this is getting out of hand?
I did feel like it was going to happen.
So, so I'm, I'm sorry. I couldn't answer for you, planning is only process. So if it is only for discussion, I would encourage someone to ask your planning commission, what the process is and where this is.
That's why I think people need to come tomorrow and talk, because I asked you where we need to start. And you said the area planning commission.
They said no one has gone to the rock. They have not gone to the advisory planning commission to bring anything to us, commissioner, to vote on. Ever.
But we have.
Well, if they're not voting, I mean, I can't help it if they're not.
I just, here's the, this is confusing, because I feel like, I mean, you, you want us to ask questions, we talked about that.
Yeah, because I have a lot of people not asking questions, and there are some, I'm doing a lot of things, okay?
So we're asking questions, and I asked you, do you, would you think a moratorium?
And I said, I, and I said, I would consider it, yes.
So, I just want to know.
Problem is, we need to have three commissioners, and I, it's going to be.
Well, okay.
At least another ten days before.
So.
When Andrew resignation makes a fact on Friday.
Right.
The Republican Party chairman has to notify the precinct committeemen ten days in advance of a process.
Right.
To appoint a replacement. And that letter is from Colleen, and or I, neither one received the letter.
Well, I would jump by that one.
And I told Paula on election day, she needed to get that letter out immediately and get it called. It's all the position that we have received it.
There is a staff person who's here, because I'm still applying, I understand. So, I, I do have to say the area commission, they're the ones who are working motion, ask for moratorium ordinances. Commissioners are the ones who are okay or not. So that can't be done until a third commissioner at interim is within, is that correct?
That, well, I mean, two is a forum, the two could vote, but if you have one, one tie.
So then, I'd like to ask specifically Tim and Brenda, how do you plan to vote if a moratorium is sent your way from the area? Say a twelve-month moratorium.
I don't know at this time, um, only because I have not voted on anything solar. I've been accused of everything solar is a conflict of interest, so why, why should I vote on anything solar?
Just being a good.
Just a question. I'm just saying, it's a question, it's like, you want me to vote this way, but then this other person over here thinks I should vote this way. But because I opted in a solar project, I'm not supposed to vote on anything.
So you're saying you would not vote?
I'm just, I'm not saying, I don't know if the moment arrives. I told Tina I would consider a moratorium. But I wanted to get some more information, I approached other county commissioners that have voted on them, the pros and cons. And until I feel confident in voting, I don't know, at this time, I say I would consider.
And that's right, yeah, Sam, how, how do you think you would vote?
I'll see what the planning commission says. I'm not, I'm not going to go for a year, I'll tell you that. I'll, I'll go for, well, the whole purpose of this whole thing was to get the boundary county overlay. Where people would have a chance to voice their concerns. Main concern at the beginning was citizens had no choice. Well, this overlay will give them a voice. The second that overlay is in, if I would vote on a moratorium. It would be over the second that overlay was, and I'm not going to wait forever for that to be done, people.
overlay on a bunch of topics like driveway.
Some of them, overlay was strictly solar.
We reached the limit, that's what people are saying, we have this percentage, we've got fifty million coming in out. Isn't that enough to say no more solar, why can't you just say, we're out. We've limited, no more solar.
At least for a year, but like, what if a year is not more? I don't understand why. To listen to what all the people are now saying. Because that kind of side of twenty twenty, and then the story is, if you really really find that twenty twenty, why aren't you willing to take a year's time? To really think about what's best for the future of this county?
Okay, because I've done what I thought was best for the future, and still think for the future of the county itself.
Not us.
Getting, you don't like to look at. Yeah, I think it would have come down worse if those people, well, bang bang, had driven their issues.
No, that's not true.
And if you ever bought acre of land in the country, and you thought you could control what happened around you, you were so wrong. Anybody ever did that? Because they don't control, you don't own.
The whole point is to protect that the neighbors' property, you can't, it's supposed to have life, you know, light use for weight. So that if a power plant can't come in, and then add a fuel. So I mean, we're really excited what's going to go out, we're using zoning against what it's supposed to be used for. We are using zoning to say, yes, the company can do whatever they want, instead of using zoning to protect the people of the town.
Yeah.
I mean, you're the one that is, you can't eat solar panels, but you can eat corn.
Right. Indiana had over two billion surplus last year, China bought a hundred something billion, that's both were the form, and blah, 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 we got planted in Sarsaparilla. That's millions of acres in Sarsaparilla.
You just went to Sarsaparilla to me, Jim, I think this sucks, that's fire now. Okay, Kelly, you know, okay, when I was a kid, I remember Sarsaparilla, I remember rotating fields that we did hard. And they just grew up, and now, they don't do that anymore. The program now is ditches and things like that, is that true?
The CRP.
Right, it's not the same, the same old sense like that you're trying to talk about. Do you have any land on your farm that you own, that you do not have, it's a cost?
No.
Right, so the government is not paying for Sarsaparilla, like you were trying to tell people that they are.
The only thing we have is water.
Against the marriage of statistics or county limits.
Well, you, can you get the paper stack, you're talking about. What?
The last year's statistics, so I don't think we know.
Why, why are you writing?
I won't.
So we need to. But nothing in that.
Okay, so yes, that's, um.
About.
So.
We got a lot of solar.
Okay.
Last time I came to a meeting like this, from the council in, in, nineteen seventy-eight, I was on the county extension board.
Can I ask a?
Do you know what the con? Okay, thank you. I thought that's a word, but I listened, she had the deep bristle, my own, sir. Dad's dad was auditor here, fifty-six, sixty-five, and my, my mom's dad was a commissioner in the fifties. And a great uncle was, uh, county prosecutor in the twenties and thirties, so a lot of history here. But anyway, we, they had a meeting, and it was down in the basement, packed crap. And you know what it was about?
Voting.
No. The, uh, county extension agent, Mike McKinney, wanted to get a computer for the extension office. There probably wasn't a computer in the courthouse. And it was a big deal. And there was, what I thought, where old timers would get up and say, I've used the extension for forty years, and they didn't have a computer, we got along great, you know? I'm like, and now I'm probably the age of the guy that was the old timer then, you know? But the overall majority, and it was quite obvious, and a lot of other old timers got it, and said, well, you know, I probably will never use it. But I think it's the thing of the future, and we ought to do it. So the obvious overall majority was for it. So the point was, the council and commissioners felt the constituents were for it, and they went. You know, that they felt like that the shared obligation of being an elected official, official, to serve their community with the will of the people. And I was here the last, last week of meetings, Ben's and I, you know, there's hundreds of people. There wasn't one here fighting you. You know, and you guys have an obligation, serving the, the community. And my second point, this is totally different. And it is, there is something much bigger than anything you hear, or even thinking of. Because you don't know. Because our country, now, I got to say this first, not to get any sympathy or anything, but just to let you know where I'm from. My wife was killed in a heart, seventeen years ago this month. And you know what affects her life, and you do different things, you call therapy. Well, my therapy ended up being, I'm an obsessive researcher, and I don't know why, but I can research things every night. I've got hundreds of pages of notes of all kinds of things. And the one thing that just has driven me nuts for the last fifteen years, and I don't know if any of you have heard of this, but our government has signed up for this since nineteen ninety-two. It's called One World Agenda, Agenda twenty-one thirty. You might have heard of it, but if you really ever forget, I'm going to read some of the highlights. And every time I read one of these, realize that our government.
Yeah.
Has already signed it, it's, it's a, and they're pushing this now. And that's what we're seeing with solar. Now, here's some of the highlights. No one will be allowed to own any property. It's like that. All people will live in government houses. No one will own personal vehicles. This is right out, I haven't changed any words, that. Everyone will use public transportation. There will be no churches, remove God. Government will own and operate. Government will own and operate all agriculture. Government will provide a sustainable income for all. Population will be moved to new huge cities in government approved areas. What we hear about now, fifteen minute cities. Practically restricted to approved areas. We are to give up our constitution and replace it with the New World Order constitution. No military, that will be provided by the UN. Now, this is the one that scares me, depopulation, and this is their words, too many useless eaters. Depopulated by ninety five percent. There's eight billion people, basically they want to kill seventy nine billion people in the world, and this is by, I don't even clear. I didn't make any of this up, this is all massive immigration to the United States, what's been going on the last three years. And remove fossil fuels, which that, there isn't, there isn't even anything that has fossil fuels. That started in the early nineteen hundreds, John Rockefeller was in the Middle East, they found some died of COVID-19s, and they found oil underneath. And he came up with the idea, call them fossil fuels, so that the world would think there was limited supply. But there is more oil produced by our earth every day than is what is taken out, it's a self-producing product. So. From, uh, what's your company, Dolphin. I mean, you do a great job, you're, you're well versed, you're very professional, but I don't think you even realize. This is a bigger agenda than just trying to get solar panels and some fuels. This is, this is all government control, they want to control everything, they want to control how we live, what we eat. In Oregon, they just passed laws this month ago, nobody can have a garden, ten chickens, no homesteading whatsoever, that they're gonna enforce. That's just the start, it's all from the ten to twenty one thirty, and I have been reading this for years. And I talk to people about it, nobody's heard about it, and then they're always like, well, what are you gonna do about it? You know, and I don't know. But I thought this is the perfect time to talk about it and how it relates, but what's going on. You know, there, what you've heard all talk about, central bank digital currencies, that's what China does, they control everything, there's no cash. You can't have a yard sale, this gets all part of that agenda, which this is too, to control us, they're putting me in rhythm. And, you know, replace cattle and hogs, to have people eat insects, you know, and, but they're doing it right now. And when I've talked to the people higher up, then you can't tell them anything, then they'll say, it's gotta start here. It's gotta start at the level, it's gotta start telling them, no, that we're not gonna supply.
Do you have anything else, any questions?
Plan commission, each morning.
Tomorrow night, planning commission.
Is it here, Tim's here?
No, it's Campbell taking it over. Campbell.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll go over on it tomorrow.
Okay. Six five, so six five. Six four.
Thank you, every motion opposed, question in.
Second, I'll see that.
Motion to close the council, um, all over the table. Brenda, so you had two meetings today.